Good afternoon and we welcome out everybody to our regular meeting of December 9th. For the record, it is 1:07. If you'll call roll please.
Mayor Barone.
President.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Peralta.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Cantu.
Here.
Steve, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please, since you're the last man standing?
My pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll remain standing for a brief moment of silence, again, for all those community members in our community that continue to suffer and those families that have lost one, have lost parts of their family recently and that we can continue the memories of those family members within our own families during this Christmas season. Council approve of the agenda?
So moved.
You have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I do have an amendment, actually, on one, and that's with regards to the consent. I wanted to see if we can pull off item A for further discussion, and that's with regards to the contract increase from 50,000 to 100 with regards to Phoenix Mechanical.
Okay.
And with that, I move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, who so will. Okay. A motion to approve the agenda as amended is on the table. We have a second to that.
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Okay. So then we go to awards and recognitions, Employee of the Month. Amy? It's always great when you come up and something positive within our employees.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and Mr. Manager. This month, for the month of December, the Employee Recognition Team of the Town of Taos has recognized Dinah Gonzalez. If you'll go ahead and come on up, Dinah. Dinah's part of the... I am so pleased to offer this certificate of appreciation to Dinah. She's kind of, I joke with her because she's my neighbor at town hall. We share, we're like neighbors next door to each other, and I kind of call her the one-woman show over there. She's been in the planning department and had to assume a lot of responsibilities and different roles within the planning department, and so we are just so pleased this month to offer this award to Dinah. She's very much deserving of it. Thank you, Dinah. We really appreciate all your efforts. (applause) Steve?
Thanks.
Yes, you want to?
And also in our appreciation, we have two gift certificates, and also you will get a day of administrative leave to take.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Enjoy the meal.
Thank you.
One of these days.
Dinah?
Mr. Mayor, I want to give a special thanks to Dinah. I have the opportunity to work with her every day. As you're aware, we lost our senior planner and our planning director, and one of the things we heard constantly was that everyone in that department was so overworked. We then lost our animal control and coaching coordinator officer, and Dinah has held that whole department together and done an excellent job. She's learned every position in there in a very short amount of time, and I have heard absolutely no complaints from the public. She handles difficult customers and difficult questions with equal ease, and I offer her my personal thanks for doing such a great job. And Dinah and I have agreed that she will have the opportunity to transition into being our new planner one in the department.
Thank you. Again, thank you for doing all you have, and keep up the good work. Thanks. So go on to presentations. Tri-County Suicide Prevention Grant, Mr. Rick.
I believe there's someone here for presentation?
Denise Frank?
Kim Hamstrung.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so's Denise.
I should have known that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
This is more positive news. So I'm happy to announce that there's been a grassroots effort in Taos County for the past three years in the development and exploration of the crisis system of care, and there's been many providers and community members that have been meeting and talking about how to save lives and what it's going to take to decrease especially the suicide rate in Taos County, as well as increased services available for all of our community members. We were chosen by the state of New Mexico Behavioral Health Service Division to work jointly with Taos County to go for a SAMSA grant that would cover a three-year project to start a full support service delivery system for crisis system of care and suicide prevention. This is an incredible, I think, kudos to the town and the county of Taos in that it will reach all members. A few things that this grant will support is coordination with all legal entities. It will support agencies, individuals, and individual providers. We will be talking to the town and the county to implement what's called a zero-suicide model, and what that is, is suicide prevention is embedded at every level of care, from medical to the ER, hospital, within the community at meetings like this. We will be providing mental health first aid training for community members and hopefully all of you. I will be sending invites. It will also, the big news for, I think, Taos County is it will support a 24/7 mobile crisis unit, and this will be a unit that will be dispatched by police or EMS. And trained counselors and trained community members will be able to go to crime scenes, to domestic violence places, to the ER, anywhere in the community, instead of expecting people to search out treatment, is they will be able to have the treatment come to them. We will be having two committees that will support the implementation of this, and that will be a suicide advocacy committee, which will be suicide survivors and family members. We will rely on them heavily. Before we do protocols, their feedback and their ideas will be honored because they've been there. We have to rely on them. The other part will be a steering committee, and that will be... Oh, I'm not even doing that. Okay, I kind of went past that. That will be members from the council. It will be community members, providers, primary care physicians, ER staff, hospital staff, many, many community members to help us implement a prevention program that is meaningful versus implementing a program. The community has to partake in this, so we'll be doing more PSAs and outreach. As you can see up here, is, we got the check. Basically, this is a $3 million grant that goes over a three-year period. The state of New Mexico will be the fiscal agent, so they will keep some of the money, and Taos gets a lot of that, to really do the planning and the training. So the first two years is really going to be implementation. I just got back from SAMSA, and it was an incredible learning experience in that we're in it with four other states, and amazingly, the other states, the state is the lead on this project, where here in New Mexico, Taos is the lead on the project. So it's very different when you look, I think we're rural. So it's a great project for us. Part of the reason we got it is when you look at our suicide stats, is we have a rate of 20.9 across the state, and Taos County is 22.2, which is high. And one of the things that we've also embedded in this grant is working with the chamber and many communities to do very appropriate assistant brochures and education, if you will, at all of our tourist areas, because over 50% of the suicides in Taos County are non-Taos County members, which we all know the sadness with the bridge. So that is embedded in this project, is we're, when we look at the other grantees, we have 150,000 community members that come and go all year, and that's our tourists, and we need to do some due diligence to reach them so they don't come here for a negative experience. This also, this grant will do, is we'll be reaching out to all providers in the county to do the same type of assessments that are proven effective by the federal government and providers. It will include three suicide assessments and a substance abuse assessment, because I think we all know the damage of substance abuse in our community, which in many times, when there's substance abuse, that is also impacting our high suicide rate, because the two go hand in hand. So we'll be addressing that. Let me see, get my little roly going here. Another reason we got this is we were able to gather data, thanks to many of what a lot of our agencies across the county do, is 40% of our 911 calls are mental health and substance, which is where our mobile crisis unit is so needed, is yes, the police may have to go on the initial call, but if it's a mental health or a substance abuse call, our, the mobile crisis can stay, and our legal people can go do what they need to do, which is deal with probably more crime than having to stay there and do what they do now, is there are online counselors. So this mobile crisis will help that get into play. If you look at the number of ER visits, 1,351, were because of anxiety and depression. Again, there needs to be more support services so people don't have to use the ER as their treatment center, and we can go to them versus them having to find a ride, call EMS, find a way to the ER. So again, this is a readiness grant, but we will be, because of the crisis system of care, we're about a year ahead of where the other grantees are, so we are going to be able to start hopefully service delivery at a small scale in January, hoping for the mobile crisis to come up in April, instead of having to wait for an implementation year. So we're really happy about that. Let me see, I'm going the wrong direction here. So what this grant supports is services for ages 25 to 64. However, the mobile crisis unit will be able to see adolescents and children and families, and we report the numbers based on the 25 to 64. We have to serve 300 people in the next three years, and I think we'll do that very quickly. We're here to promote suicide prevention as a core component in healthcare, and again, to repeat, is this will be going to primary care, specialists, the ER, not just mental health agencies. We will be doing lots of training for providers across the county that will be for free, to implement all the same treatment protocols and accessibility. We will also, and this is huge, is training as many community members that we can on New Mexico on mental health first aid, because that saves lives, and anyone can do that. Okay, so we got core component, that's kind of a repeat. So again, the mobile crisis unit, the screening and assessment, and the other piece is immediate follow-up, is a person in crisis should not have to wait three to seven days to be seen. It should be immediate, and that will be another implementation on this grant, is people do not have to wait to find treatment. Can we talk about that? So again, our whole goal is, and this is where the leadership with you all is going to be so important, is we need to adopt zero suicide. Is this grant, we didn't say we were going to decrease suicide 45%. What our goal is, is to have services, to have 24/7 care, so we have no more suicides. And that is a big goal, but to save our community, that's what we have to do. So, any questions? We're excited. This was three years in the making, and I think we can save lives in our incredible community, and it will take all of us.
So what do you need us to do?
I'm going to be bringing you a memorandum of understanding that you support the project, and we would like to come in probably once a quarter and give you an update on our progress, and just to keep the town involved into what we're doing.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We truly appreciate it. We can save one life, and that's what it's all about, so thank you.
That's what this is about.
Council, council member?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's important, too, to state that the crisis phones are now up at our bridge. So if they save one, it's well worth the effort. Thank you.
Now, I just want to say on that line, too, counselor, thank for Kit Carson for stepping up. I know that you were having trouble finding somebody to put those phones in, and Kit Carson took that challenge and got it done, so.
Thanks to the fiber. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
to do so for five minutes, but before we get started under that, I'd just like to take this opportunity, and Mitch, if you'll come up, please, I would like to, I, you know, I have a little certificate of appreciation. I, you know, we had a very wonderful event on the plaza with all the lights, and I think you were very instrumental in helping facilitate that. You have worked with the town staff, with REA staff, or I say REA, it's Kit Carson, I always called him REA, but I think it's, you know, you stepped up, really helped. It was wonderful. Counselor Cantu, I saw you out there hanging lights, helping decorate trees, along with a number of people in our community. There's a lot that, you know, we can go down the list, but, you know, the work that you actually did out there and coordinating with our staff, and then the other things that you've helped within our community, you know, when the governor came, you stepped up and helped in the old county courthouse. You helped with some of the lighting, the reception that I had in the old county courthouse. You stepped in and helped, again, with the lighting and sound, and the number of times you've stepped up with your equipment and helped. I'd just like to recognize you and just give you a certificate of appreciation for all that you have done and gone above and beyond what our citizens have shared. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I want to give a real heartfelt thanks to Kit Carson Electric, which, once again, every time we do one of these events, whether it was the Congos, whether it's SolarFest, probably half the events around town, including all the Christmas decorations, would not be possible if it wasn't for Kit Carson, their staff, and their equipment to donate their time and resources to the community to make this possible.
Thank you.
And we should probably have Mr. Reyes here at a future meeting to thank him overall for all the things that they do provide to the community.
Will do. So, this is under the citizens forum, and anybody like to address? Mitch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Mr. Manager, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for that honor, and it was truly unexpected. I actually came here to thank you, and if I may, be so bold, take a minute.
Get where the mic can amplify your voice.
It's not often that I have an opportunity to share the success of a project, and I appreciate this opportunity to address this body and the constituency. What a privilege it was to partner with the Town of Taos, Kit Carson Electric Co-op, and Ace Hardware to create the Winter Wonderland at the Plaza. Certain individuals stand out from the town that I would like to acknowledge. Judy Escaval, Steve Kennebec, Gilbert Martinez, Jose Sanchez, Julie Scansis, Elias Padilla, Sharon Voight, Steve Pacheco, all played a different yet vital role to the execution and success of this endeavor. I asked Mr. Martinez of the Parks Department to provide me with names of those that were also involved, but I had not had the pleasure to meet, and if I may, I'd like to acknowledge them as well. From the Parks Department, Danny Mondragon, Carlos Otega, Ricardo Romero, Francisco Martinez. From the Building Department, Charlie Sanchez, Cuate Herrera, Jonathan Evans. From the Facilities Department, Linda Montoya, Pam Pacheco, Loretta Anaya, Antonio Sanchez. And from the Civic Center, Moises Sanchez and Aaron Martinez. Again, vital and diverse roles that came together to participate in the Plaza tree lighting event. I think it also important to acknowledge the tireless efforts of the crew from Kit Carson Electric Co-op. Luis Reyes, without hesitation, thankfully, volunteered his staff and equipment to ensure the success of this project. Without their support, we would not have accomplished what we did in such a short amount of time. At one point, there were at least six KCE employees in several vehicles dispatched to the Plaza and other town decorating activities. Each of the Kit Carson crew brought their A-game and worked hard on something. They felt that they were involved, and they acted like they were involved in something important. They were a great group of guys to work with, as well as the city employees. The result of the tree lighting projects were immediate. The town, from town employees getting into the holiday spirit, to the countless neighbors and visitors that thanked the mayor, myself and anyone they thought to be involved on Friday night. To the line of cars and wide-eyed jaw-dropped smiling faces on the Plaza over the past several nights, it is the talk of the town. My role was to implement an idea, to work with available resources and to oversee the project as a whole. But truly, this was the brainchild of Mayor Barone and Mr. Bellas specifically. Their vision of creating exciting citizen-based activities and events has already had an impact on our community. I believe that when we, the people of Taos, are happy and excited about things going on around town, it is infectious, both to ourselves and those that visit our community. I posted several pictures online and received comments and likes from around the community and the country. From people who have already visited Taos, and many who have always wanted to, or are planning to, the impact was positive and exciting. There was also a really good discussion about why didn't we use solar power, which I addressed, but it was a great community forum of how great it was that the Plaza was lit up the way it was, but can we add solar next year? And I quickly said, "Yeah, for $50,000 and a whole lot of effort, we might be able to do that." I'm so grateful to be a part of this community and deeply desire to see it flourish and grow. The current mayor, town manager, and town council deserve credit for reaching towards new ideas and continuing to support cultural traditions, for looking to the future with our town as a vital partner in New Mexico's evolving identity, and for having the courage and foresight to infuse us, your constituency, with the opportunity to feel that we are vital and growing. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mitch.
Mr. Mayor, I also want to thank Councilwoman Cantu, who stepped up to the plate, and we haven't gotten a lot of volunteers for our previous events, but she worked with Judy Escaval very tirelessly, and with the mayor's wife, and with other volunteers in the community, and I think really took the leadership that made this happen in a quick fashion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Paul?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and town manager. My name is Paul Figueroa. Today, I come to you as the president of the Taos Fall Arts Festival. But before speaking on the festival's 40th year, I'd like to take a moment as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for the Town of Taos to also acknowledge your Employee of the Month, Ms. Gonzalez. She has been tireless in providing the Historic Preservation Commission with information, minutes, and is always available whenever I drop by requesting an agenda packet. Thank you so much for the recognition of a very deserving employee in your town. I also want to second the remarks made by Mitch and say that the Plaza continues to have momentum going for it, and I'll share with you a comment that one of my group made in turning from Ledoux Street and the stroll on Saturday night up to the Plaza. Was that the Plaza is very impressive, and that this couple went to Santa Fe last winter and expected to see a lot of lights and Christmas spirit on the Plaza in Santa Fe, and they were very disappointed. I'm glad to say that they stayed home this year and are not disappointed at all in what Taos stepped up to the plate and accomplished in terms of the holiday tree and the lighting of the Plaza. Kadoos to everyone. But today, I'm here on behalf of the Volunteer Board of Directors of the Fall Arts Festival, and also on behalf of Matt Thomas and the Paseo Board, to thank you, the town, for the incredible cooperation and the spirit of partnership from the town for the 40th Fall Arts Festival. I don't have quite the extensive list of individuals that Mitch recounted, and over the years, I've learned that sometimes I'm not too good at that, and I might omit someone. So today, I'd just like to share with you the departments that were involved in making that 40th anniversary very special for the fall arts and for introducing new energy through the Paseo. That's the Administrative Department, Police Department, Public Works, Facilities, Parks, Youth and Family Services, the Town Library, and the Taos Volunteer Fire Department. It is my pleasure on behalf of the Board of the Fall Arts Festival to present the Town of Taos with a framed signed poster of the 40th Anniversary Celebration, a work entitled Glorious Morning by Taos artist Taruko Wild.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Paul. You know, those of us that work in the town hall here get to see him on a regular basis. He is constantly serving as curator and installer for all of the arts exhibitions throughout our buildings, and helped, if you have not been in the training room, which I believe is 109, please take a visit to that. Steve and the facility staff found some old photographs that used to be, I believe, in this room?
They were in a closet.
They were in a closet, and they're wonderful historical pictures that show the whole history of our town, and Paul was invaluable in getting them cleaned up, identified, and mounted to the wall in there so that they're available to all the public. And I believe he has some additional ideas, along with Steve, about art in this room that they'll be bringing to us shortly.
So, Paul, again, thank you. Thank your group for what you have done for our art community also. That was, you know, one of the, that Fall Arts Festival really brought a lot of attention to our community, and, you know, again, as Mitch said and you have said, you know, when we uplift our own people within our own community, it draws from other communities. We can advertise, but if we're not happy here, nobody's happy. If everybody's happy here, people come. So thank you, guys. Council? Okay. Anyone else who wishes to address the?
Mr. Mayor?
Steven?
After Steven, I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
If the last meeting, contract with Griffin and Associates was discussed and approved. There was a great deal of...
Steven, you might, I don't know if that mic's on, maybe it's not... Yeah.
There was a great deal of discussion, and the contract was approved. Towards the end of the discussion, there were a number of questions about the contract itself, about the billing and reimbursables. itself, about the billing and reimbursables, and I believe that that was discussed in executive session. After the executive session, I wonder if the council feels the same way about the contract, and if any of the individual members who voiced support for it or disagreed with it changed their minds? And can any of that be discussed? And I also have a question about the transfer of the buildings to UNM, and when that comes up, I hope I can make a comment about that. But as to the contract, is that something that somebody can comment upon, Rick or somebody?
Well, I think it was up to the individual counselor, and I, you know, I, under the, they will have an opportunity, if they would wish, under the matters from the council, if they would like to comment, or if there's any further comment on that.
But the contract stands?
Correct.
And...
At this point, so.
And can anybody speak to the question of how the billing was handled? I think there was some misunderstanding or questions about the wording in the contract. Was that all settled?
Floyd, did you want to, well, you don't have to address it now, it's more public comment than anything, and if you would, you might want to get with Steven and explain to him.
No, but...
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and go on. I'm sorry, you, Counselor Gonzalez?
I wanted to see if I could just have Ovi come up real quick with regards to the rumblings that I'm hearing throughout the community on issues that are happening with the dispatch facility with regards to EMS and fire. Ovi, if you can just provide us with an update, because I haven't heard anything other than what I've heard on the street, and I'd rather get it from the horse's mouth.
One second, please. Hopefully, it doesn't die. So, last week during the transition, we, the new dispatch center did sound a page on the Taos Fire Frequency. It was not the correct page. We didn't recognize the sound. We instructed the dispatch center of that, and they said, "Okay, thank you," didn't hear anything else after that. As for a brief timeline regarding what happened, that was on December 3, approximately 10:17. There was a text message to town manager that the paging system was down, and the fire department had resorted back to our in-house backup systems, which is basically dispatch will contact one of the live-ins that live at the stations. From there, they will operate dispatch from our personal facilities, that being either Station 1's dispatch facility, Stations 2's dispatch facility, or the mobile command unit. On December 4, several emails were sent between County Manager Archuleta and County Fire Chief Sanchez regarding the work needing to be done, the issues that were being faced with the move, as in us being unable, or for them to being unable to page us out to any incidents. And they had also spoken about, you know, ways to create better avenues of communication within the dispatch center itself and between the local governing bodies. On the afternoon of the 4th, Chief Gonzalez had received an email from the county fire chief stating that the paging system had been worked on, they were currently working on it. On the 5th, at 12:56 PM, there was a second email from Alan Sanchez stating that the system was up and operable and that they were continuing to test the system. Later that afternoon, it was found, the system was still inoperable. That evening, we instructed the volunteers that lived at the stations that we are going to continue following our emergency protocols for paging and dispatch for several more days until they had ample time to test the systems. On the 7th, Chief Gonzalez had contacted town manager Bellas again, instructed him, let him know what we were doing. On the 8th, myself and engineer Bather stopped by dispatch to speak with them in their facility themselves and had them attempt to page us out. At that point, we discovered that one of the two types of pages that they used for us was operable. The operable page is called a station page, which is generally a page used for minor incidents, notifications, some things like that. The general page, which is the page that tones us out to large incidents, i.e. structured fires, large collisions, motor vehicle collisions, things of that nature, are not, was not working. I spoke with them again this afternoon, asked them to attempt to page us out again, and still, the staff page is working, the general page is still inoperable.
Thanks, Eric. Mr. Mayor, I guess the problem that I have with it is that, as an elected official, why am I hearing it from this, from the community as opposed to my own staff? And I'm looking back at Mr. Bellas, just a heads-up would have been nice on something like this, because I'm thinking things are moving smoothly since transition. And I'm wondering if transition wasn't premature before having the state-of-the-art system tested out. What causes this stuff? Do we know?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Peralta, the best of my understanding is it is a software glitch or a programming malfunction. As past that, I can't speak, I really don't have contact with the facility, I'm not in there, I'm not speaking with the technicians.
Conrad, will we be able to, I mean, is this going to come down to a radio issue at some point, being that we upgraded system software, but our hardware's not talking to the system software because it's too advanced for what we have?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Gonzalez, at this time, the problem still is there, and I know that they are still working on it. The responsibility really falls on Motorola to get it erected and fixed and bring it on. Whether or not it's a software problem, I can't really address that problem. I did, after talking to you on the way over here, made a call to find out where things were at, and it was just that, it was just the paging problem that Eric had just discussed, and they're still working on it. I know that that problem does fall on Motorola, so if the county elected to, they could go after Motorola for any damages, but that's between the county and Motorola. I don't think there's anything that the town can do, anything other than request that, make sure that the county actually informs us accurately to make sure that we understand what's going on and how it's affected also.
Well, and I guess the reason I'm asking is because as of right now, until December 31, we're still operating under the joint powers agreement, and we are that entity. So liability falls back into the city at this point, and that's why I asked if that cutover was premature.
I don't believe it was premature. I believe all of the equipment was tested to Motorola standards, but something happened there between their testing and, I guess they didn't test that one function correctly or enough to make sure that it was fail-safe, but I can't really say, because I wasn't there during the testing portion, and there is a large portion of what they do is testing, and it takes a long time for them to test it. And I assume that at some point, they did test that to make sure, because they have a checkoff list, and they had to have tested that particular tone. Why, after the cutover, did that tone not work, I don't know, and I couldn't answer that.
Counselor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask a quick question, goes back to the question Councilmember Gonzalez was talking about, and that is, in that paging system, the tone, is that coming from new equipment, old equipment, new software, old software, or do you know?
The tone actually comes from new equipment, which are the radios that were installed over at the county, and so it is brand-new equipment, and it should have been tested. And again, I'm not sure what happened there between the testing and...
Are they trying to send a digital signal over an analog program that we have in place in the, in our vehicle?
That is possible, I don't know, and I wish I could answer that better, but I can make some calls and find out and give you a more concise answer, if you would like that, before the close of the meeting.
Because I'm just thinking of the possibility that you have a digital signal coming out and it has to be converted to analog, and it's not converting because of the software that's being used, or the hardware doesn't, can't make that conversion, and it's something that was overlooked, that we don't have digital equipment in the field.
Right.
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess...
Get an update on that, and, Mr. Mayor, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, and I did call Steve this morning, because, again, we knew there was going to be some glitches when the, it moved from one place to another, there was going to be some glitches, they told us there was going to be some glitches. We didn't know the extent of the glitches, and I did call Steve this morning and asked him how they were addressing him. He told me that he had Motorola on the line, and that, you know, they basically told him, you know, "This is what you were hired to do, and we expect this to be up and running." They guaranteed him they would have more people here, and they would try to address the glitch that we're having. So that's the word from the county that I got this morning at 8 o'clock, 8:05.
So, Eric, I guess what happens now, in the meantime, not having that, the correct paging system, how are you guys notified of the correct incident to respond to?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Gonzalez, it, basically, we're still operating under the same functions. Dispatch notifies us either over the radio or by phone, and if we do need to sound a general page, we have those capabilities in-house. As I stated earlier, we do still retain, or, sorry, Central retains the ability to send a staff page, which is a page that sends out to all of the units and all the personnel within the department and is able to notify them of whatever issue may have arisen. So we are, we're completely functional, we just do lack the one tone for our general pages, which we can do ourselves. As for the record, we are not the only department that was missing any issues or were unable to be paged out. There were several other county departments that were unable to be paged out, as well as Taos County EMS, and I cannot speak for the county departments and whether or not they are currently able to be paged out. I don't know where, I can only assume that they are on the same page as us, and that they are currently working on the issue and testing it.
Okay. I appreciate an update.
I'll have an update to you before the end of the meeting.
And some pressure, Mr. Mayor, if we need to turn it up?
What was that?
Some pressure, if we need to turn it up on them to...
Yeah, we will, we will. As I say, I did call this morning at 8:05, and I want to thank Conrad and his staff, because they've spent a lot of staff time over there helping. I know Conrad knows a lot about that system and can lend knowledge to that, and I just want to thank him and his staff for, you know, we made a visit over there a couple of times, and our staff was there helping, so, you know, it's truly, you know, I guess, you know, when we signed that MOU or the agreement, we, you know, we have volunteered staff, and they were there helping, so. Hopefully, we can get that, you know, I don't know if we're putting anybody's life in danger, but you guys are getting your pages, and you are moving forward with getting people out to situations.
Mr. Mayor, yes, we are able to operate to full capacity. It's, it is not a hindrance, it's just a slight annoyance, but we are able to function completely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? None? None, we'll go on to the consent agenda. I know we pulled item A off, so here, item, under the consent agenda, what is the wish on the one item on the consent agenda? Item B, Resolution 1470, 2015 Employee Holiday Schedule. Move for approval. We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second? Discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion, sorry, is a consent agenda, call for the vote.
Councilmember Kemp too?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so then we'll go under item A, First Amendment to Contract TT1520 with Phoenix Mechanical, consideration of approval, Amendment 1 to Contract TT1520 with Phoenix Mechanical to increase the contract from 50 to 100, and return to Steve. I know I had the same question, I did mention it to Mr. Lopez, so Steve.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. This is a, I was asked by Finance to put in this amendment. We get a contract for electrical, plumbing, and mechanical services for the town annually. We put it out for bid, we got one response, and that was from Phoenix Mechanical. We've had an issue that's been brought up to me, that maybe they're getting an unfair advantage. We put this year specifically these three separate functions of this contract out to bid separately, plumbing, electrical, and mechanical, so that companies that did just one of those types of services could have an opportunity to bid. We put it out, and we, the only company to respond was Phoenix. They got a, the contract, we made it for $50,000 as an additional, or as an initial start. My department, Public Works, and the Youth and Family Center used the contract, it's a town-wide contract. My, the Facility Services Department got a purchase order for $20,000 to encumber against the $50,000 contract. So far, we spent less than $4,000 this year. The remainder of the contract amount has been encumbered by the other two departments. So the reason we put in for the amendment is to increase the amount of the contract for the rest of the fiscal year. We did the same thing last year. We, the council approved the contract to $100,000, and I think we ended up spending about $57,000 total. So what we're trying to do is just make sure we have enough money available in the contract to encumber, not that we're going to spend the entire $100,000 amount. That's the basic description. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Counselor Peralta, and then Counselor Gonzalez.
Mr. Mayor, if I could have Marietta come up?
Yes, sir.
Marietta, on the RFP that we put out, was there a limit?
The RFP that we did put out was no limit, it was just an individual rate for either mechanical, electrical, or plumbing per hour. And in the RFP that we put out, it was also anything that goes over, I think, $1,000. Each department has to get a proposal before they proceed.
In writing.
In writing.
Okay. How much did we budget for this contract?
Each department puts in their own. He budgeted $20,000, so we opened his purchase order for 20. Other departments have budgets for repair, maintenance of items, I could lump some. So each department is responsible for doing a task order and getting their own purchase order open. So as we open those individually, we double-check the budget on our side when they open those up.
So you don't know exactly how much we have available in the budget?
Not, not in the total budget at all for all departments.
Okay. I have a problem. It's contract. State procurement says we can increase the contract by more than 10%. So if we're going to do this, we need a new contract for another $50,000.
So I'll yield to Floyd, but we checked everywhere in the procurement code to see where that clause is, because I know you've mentioned that, and we've looked, and we have yet to find that information, so I yield to Floyd.
I'll find it, but it's there.
Yeah, I mean, we searched for it, and we looked for it.
The reason for that in there is because whenever you advertise for something, you're supposed to put a limitation as to how much that's for, so that if you can't go over that amount without consideration for anybody else who would possibly bid on it, having an equal opportunity, and you don't create something that's wrong. So because we have enough money in the budget, it's my feeling that we need a new contract, and we can't amend this one.
And I'll yield to the attorney on this one, because I know when we did the proposal on it, we did an advertised proposal, because at that point, we knew that things were going to be over the threshold limit, so we advertised out in the paper for a consistent time, and so we did not put a limit on that proposal. It's sort of like an on-call engineering services, I guess. But we didn't have projects listed out, because there are emergencies that come up, so we didn't list out the amount.
I understand that, that's why I'm saying is that you didn't put a limit on what we could have done in the contract amount for them, so, but you did create a contract for a maximum $50,000, so going over that by 100% needs a new contract.
And Marietta, I'm just, I'm just hearing, just sitting back here and listening, I just want to clarify something. We had an original contract for $50,000, correct?
Uh, yes.
And then we went...
And then we went out and put out another one for 50,000? No?
We amended it last year for additional 50,000, just because in previous years, we may have exceeded the $50,000 amount. So we brought it to council. Up to 100, that doesn't necessarily mean that they can go up to 100. Every purchase order has to be run through us and approved by us to make sure it's in the budget. So that's what we did last year. So we're still going through the same procurement, with the same procurement, but a different contract each year, each fiscal year. So...
No, and I understand that. What I'm just saying is that if I missed that one last year, then my fault, but it should be a new contract, because you can't.
So...
When you declare a contract, you declare a contract. And so in order to increase over that by more than 10%, then we need a new contract. And you have it within the budget and within the RFP to do that. I'm not questioning that part of it.
Right.
I'm just saying that we can't use an amendment to make that new contract.
Mr. Lopez, do you want to address that, or we want to go to Councilor Gonzalez's questions and then you can...
3140, but it doesn't mention what Council, what former Mayor Pronga is discussing. And Ms. Boyd, I think, raised the issue last year when it was increased, and I think the issue came up as well with the municipal league, and she reported back that nobody there seemed to know about that either. So if you're aware of some provision in the procurement code that says that, I'm more than eager to look at it, but nobody that I've talked to is aware of it. And we had these discussions this morning, actually, Ms. Fambro was going to get ahold of you before the meeting and let you know what the result is. Research.
Councilor Gonzalez?
I guess the problem I have, Mr. Mayor, is just the latitude of having that kind of expenditure funds, in that we're not but halfway through our fiscal year and we've already almost exhausted it. We're 46?
No, sir. Right now, I believe for this year, we're about 22,000 of the $50,000 contract. It's a matter of what we encumber in purchase orders, not necessarily what we've spent in actual services. So what we want to be able to do with this contract, we first, as the town, tried to use our own staff to make repairs and fixes, but if it's beyond our capability, we have one certified electrician, we don't have a certified plumber, we don't have a certified HVAC repairman. So when it's something that's beyond our staff's capability to do, that's why we have this contract. So while we encumber, like my department has encumbered 20,000, we've only spent less than 4,000 so far. But we need to have the ability to be able to call them at short notice when something needs to be repaired, then go out for bid each time.
And I think just out of full disclosure and transparency, I'd rather see another contract, if that's the case, I mean, rather than give that leniency to 100,000.
I understand that. We, well, we did it last year, and we didn't go anywhere near the $100,000 level. We just had the ability, if something unforeseen had happened, then we then had the contract in place to get the work done right away, as opposed to going out for bid, getting council approval. It's a matter of time, really, than that it is. We didn't spend for the last two years anywhere near the $100,000 level, we just had the ability to do that.
We spent 63-plus last year. And that's between, and the biggest use of the contract is Youth and Family Center. They're the biggest department that uses it. And like Steve says, I'm, we make them open their purchase order for the amount, and that's why we're taking, they haven't spent but 22,000, but, because we want to keep control of it and make sure that if they do get to that amount through the year, then we need that amendment anyway. So we're like bringing it forward to you before.
Well, it's the issue, may I please? The issue we have now is we've encumbered up to the point of the contract now, so if something else comes up, we don't have the ability to make that spend. So all we're asking, I'm not all ears, what we're asking for is that this contract amount is increased, so that if during the course of the rest of the fiscal year, something unforeseen does happen, we've got the ability to take care of it immediately.
So we got a leaky roof at the, at the Youth and Family Center and leaky pipes?
We've got all kinds of issues at the Youth and Family Center, but the biggest spend and Brian's here for that is the repairs and maintenance to the two large systems, the system that makes ice for the ice rink and the system that controls the humidity in the pool building.
And I guess, so my issue is if this is a reoccurring issue, we know we're going to surpass the 50 and end up in the 60s or 70s, whatever it would be. Is it not less expensive for us to either fix the problem, so we're not constantly fixing the same problem? Or is it not better for us to write the contract at 75 in the beginning rather than come back for an amendment? I mean, I'm tossed between the two, because I'm looking at and saying, well, 60 grand a year on whatever the maintenance fee, and I get things happen. But if Youth and, the Youth and Families building is a large portion of that, then I think we have a bigger issue than just maintenance.
We do, but in the case of the Youth and Family Center, it's mechanical equipment and not the structure of the building itself. So that contract, that contracts for plumbing, electrical, and HVAC systems, mechanical systems, not for roofs, walls.
And Marietta and staff, I understand the confusion here, because it was done previously, and that's the way you guys wanted to proceed again this year. So I know there was a question about it. So Mr. Lopez, can you research that? Can we table this item for now? You can research it. I know we're in a hurry to get this on, because if there's an expenditure that comes up, we need to move forward it. I hate for, to see the ice rink for some reason closed, that's right now, I think the youth in our community is, you know, are the ones that really we want to support. But if we can get that, an answer to that, Mr. Lopez, and bring it back as soon as we possibly can, or maybe the council, if we can get an answer that is suitable, that, or you can't find anything, or Marietta goes back to DFA and says that's appropriate, they can give me the authority to sign off on it, or some form, so that we can continue to move this process.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, if I could, too. Steve, how much of that money goes towards routine maintenance?
None.
So that's all emergency maintenance?
My, my staff do most of the routine maintenance, like first echelon stuff, if it's changing the belts and filters on an HVAC unit, we do that. If it's something that's simple, or something electrical and our certified electrician can fix it, we do it in-house first. It's only after Julie Scanties made the call that it's beyond our capability to fix that we, that we use Phoenix.
So what type of issues are they encountering over there?
I'll tell you, for my department, the biggest spend we've made so far is the emergency repair to the HVAC unit on the server room for Town Hall during the Fourth of July weekend. It went down at 1:45 in the morning on Saturday night. And I got Mr. Draper out of bed at 2:00 AM to come and fix it. So it's not just the main unit, which we got working, he and I up on the roof, but the secondary backup failed too, and they repaired that as well.
Go ahead, Brian.
Good afternoon. The type of repairs that we're incurring right now are primarily geared towards the Dectron unit, and there was deferred maintenance on that for several years, we didn't have the money for it. So when the money became available this year, we started a comprehensive reworking of that Dectron unit. So we replaced sensors, motors, compressors, that sort of thing, and we've gotten it back to darn near perfect again. We've had emergency things like pool pumps going out, heaters going out. We're at about 10 years of operation right now, and we had a core of our big heater go out, so had to replace that whole core. Those are the kind of things that we can't really anticipate. We do have enough money in our budget to cover it luckily this year. So as they're coming up, we're replacing these things. If you remember going back about four years ago, we had that $60,000 expense when the ice rink compressors went. And that, we had to come to council specially to rush that through, so we didn't melt the ice, and we made those repairs. So that's been operating flawlessly ever since. So the things that we can anticipate, we have, right now, I think we're back in a really good place. I will take full responsibility for incurring those expenses, because there's some things that we just had to fix, but it's all been as a result of needing it desperately. And we're back to where we need to be now.
So Steve, can we, I guess, do we have the time allowance for us that we won't compromise anything within that time period to go over that 50K if we shoot it out another couple of weeks?
If I had that crystal ball, sir, I'd be betting on the lottery. Today, yes, we're fine. Who knows what can happen between now and the time it gets approved? What I would ask is maybe if, once it's clarified, if it is okay to go ahead and extend it to 100,000, that we have your approval now, so that we can get that going.
Can we do that? Can we give the approval now?
You could give the approval pending, pending...
So just so that we don't have to come back to the next council meeting and put it off by two more weeks.
Give the approval contingent upon municipal lease.
Mr. Lopez?
Mr. Mayor...
Mr. Mayor, if I could, all we need is a new contract. Just drop a new contract. That's all you got to do.
With the current vendor?
Wait, wait...
With the current vendor. We got the money in the budget, we approved the budget, so all we need is a contract for $100,000 to supersede the current $50,000 contract, rather than an amendment. That's all.
And we can certainly do that. In fact, we could, I was going to say, I'm going to, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, I'm going to the Municipal League Conference tomorrow through Friday, so there's going to be a room full of legal eagles, and I'll certainly bring up this question. But I think you have the right idea. I think the easiest thing for us to do is just to mirror this contract, change the amount, and if, if the council will go ahead and approve that today, we can have the mayor sign it and go forward.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we issue a new contract to Phoenix Mechanical in the amount of $100,000. It's within the budget.
Overall?
Overall?
Superseding the $50,000 contract now.
Second.
We have a motion, a second discussion.
So my question then, Steve and Brian, would be, and I guess Councilman Peralta, if we're going to issue a new contract, is that not going to have to go out for an RFP?
No, because the original RFP didn't have the limitation, I'd only had cost per hour per type of service provided.
And so what kind of a delay?
It's open-ended in there.
Thank you for that clarification. What kind of a delay then are we looking at, contract versus an encumbrance?
Well, the, I think, believe that encumbrance is the money that's already been encumbered under the $50,000, and that's the reason for the new contract. We can do the contract today, and as soon as Phoenix Mechanical signs it and the mayor signs it, well, what it's going to do is, Councilmember Peralta says, is it's going to supersede the existing contract. And there's no procurement required, because it's already been procured, so...
And you think, Mr. Lopez, we can get that done today?
I think we can get the contract done today. I don't know if we can get it signed by everyone today, but...
How soon do you think?
Well, tomorrow morning, I'm assuming...
Okay. So it seems like we're splitting hairs, Steve? That's how, does it...
How it gets done is not as important to me as the fact that we have it in place.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just for clarification, even the amendment would have to be signed by Phoenix Mechanical, so...
Right.
Okay.
All right.
So next year, we do, you know, ahead of time, we can get it done for the total amount that we expect to...
Well, Mayor, if I may, I think we did it at $50,000, because it's a contract level that you're, as mayor, allowed to sign, so it's just a matter of expediency, and not knowing in advance how much will be spent.
Thank you.
So is it my understanding, this contract, though, it ends June 30th?
Yes, ma'am.
So it'll be up for renewal again?
Right.
So at that point, will we be able to get a, put out an RFP to...
We bid it, it's an annual contract that we bid each year.
Annual contract.
The RFP is due for four years, and we did that in December of 2012. So the RFP is due for, but that doesn't limit us to not doing a new RFP at that time.
Okay.
To give another chance. Other...
So next year will be the fourth year, starting July of '15 through June 30th of '16 will be the last year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Conto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. So go, matters from staff, purchase agreement for the sale of Town, of Town of Taos, Rio
I'm sorry, which item is this?
This is item A, purchase agreement for sale of Town of Taos, Rio Grande Hall, and Baton Center.
Okay, I apologize, I was speaking with Mr. Kennebeck. This is a purchase agreement that we prepared pursuant to the lease with an option to purchase for the sale of Rio Grande Hall and Baton Center to the University of New Mexico for $1. This purchase and sale agreement had gone back and forth between Mr. Caldwell and the attorney for the UNM. We made the changes, basically what the agreement calls for is an as-is purchase. Attached to the agreement is a disclosure statement, which has been revised somewhat, but indicates, or gives to UNM, whatever we know about the property. And they have exercised the option, it was agreed to some time back, and it, I think, would be subject to an action for specific performance if we were to refuse to do it. So I don't think there's any way around it. The conveyance is going to be by quitclaim deed and bill of sale, as shown on page one of the contract. And it's been executed by David Harris, who is the executive vice president, COO, and CFO of University of New Mexico. They're interested in having this signed and sent to them as soon as possible, because they have to take it to both their Board of Regents as well as DFA and Board of Finance. And so there's a time of the essence issue, problem here, and so it's submitted for the approval of the council.
Vote for approval.
A motion for approval, we have a second.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Mr.... Mr. Lopez, a question. Does the agreement of sale, which was previously executed, transfer all contents to the buildings without exception?
No, there will be attached a, or there will be an executed within five days of the execution of the purchase agreement, a bill of sale and the quitclaim deed. And the bill of sale will show what items will be transferred with the, with the purchase. There are two, and I believe Mr. Kennebeck can speak to this, but there are two, there's a storage shed and some kind of oven that, that could be conceivably viewed as fixtures, but there's an agreement, as I understand, between Mr. Kennebeck and Mr. Swazo at UNM, that those will not be transferred. And then I believe that there's a list of personal property that the town manager is going to review to make sure that not everything in the building as it exists today is going to be transferred.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, just, just to ask for the council's permission, that there are certain items within the building, for example, risers, which can be used in the performance, stage lighting, things that have very little relevance to the university. And I would just ask that the attorney and the manager have the opportunity to... that the attorney and the manager have the opportunity to review that list, and if there are any items that the town would be in a position to have to purchase for future events, but with that, we already own it this time, that we not include those in the conveyance.
The only, I would just say that, that when we leased the building, we conveyed that equipment to them, so. Especially the fixed stuff, the stuff that's hardwired into the walls or the ceiling. There's a number of chairs and tables, a dance, couple of dance floors, some screens, the risers, some kitchen equipment. All that was, what we did first was offer all departments, when the lease came up, the opportunity to take from that, the equipment inventory, whatever they wanted. Fire Department took stuff, the Youth and Family Center, the Visitor Center, the library. We took some things here. So what we didn't want or need was conveyed to UNM in the lease agreement, so if, if it's possible to renegotiate that with the sale agreement, I don't see any reason not to. There are two pieces of equipment in the kitchen that Mr. Lopez alluded to. One's a commercial range, which is a beautiful range and a, or a dishwashing machine that they don't have any use for. We didn't convey to them, but we don't have any place to store, so we left it in place. A not-forgotten outreach has asked to have that if, if there is no. We, we did put it on auction and didn't get our minimum bid. So they have since, a not-forgotten outreach has asked to, to have that transferred to them by way of the Veterans Administration, the New Mexico, State of New Mexico Veterans Administration. And then there's a storage shed that my department uses for equipment and paint, and it's on Bedford Lane, just between the Fire Department and Baton Hall, and we asked to keep possession of that.
And it would stay there, Steve, or would it have to be moved?
Yeah, we'd like to keep it there where it is. And Mario Suazo, I spoke with him about it. He's, he's completely fine with that.
Because there is some equipment, I think, that, you know, as we continue to move forward and collaborate with the county and having events and, and stuff that could be used for performances at the old county courthouse and different type of things.
I think I'd be open to that. I guess Mario Suazo would be the one to discuss that with.
And I don't think they would, in their development for their nursing program, I don't think they would help in any way.
A dance, a dance floor?
Yeah. So, councilors, if we could, I don't know if we want to amend that motion to include the wording of Mr. Lopez to allow for negotiations for those non-fixed items, I guess?
Correct.
I don't believe the purchase agreement allowed for any movable objects to be conveyed.
That's.
Now, there was a separate conveyance of some movable item. It was last year of tables and chairs, but that was approved by council. So anything else that is a non-fixed item within that facility that wasn't already conveyed is still the property of the town.
Councilmember Peralta, pretty much it's those two pieces of kitchen equipment, and the rest is stuff that was conveyed to them.
And I don't need another commercial stove. I already have one.
It's a really nice stove. It's about the size of it.
I don't dance anymore. I'll fall down and break my neck.
It'll go to the, to UNM.
Well, whatever you want to do, you know.
Well, that's what I mean, you'd have to.
But that would be separate. Because that's what I'm saying, is I think the conveyance of the buildings and the land does not convey any portable property.
Portable, right, but anything affixed to the property is kind of standard that it stays put, unless there's a separate agreement, like lighting, like the manager mentioned, that could be negotiated, I'm sure.
Well, if that's the case, Mr. Mayor, I'll amend my motion to include any language for equipment that's within the facility, whether it's mounted or not, to be a negotiated item and not be included in the transfer.
Okay, with my second.
Okay, we have a second also. Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt, too?
No.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
So go to item B. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Thank you, Stephen. So go, item B, FY1516 Children, Youth, Families Department Grant Application. Linda Perry? Discussion, consideration, possible approval to submit the FY1516 CYFD grant application?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and Manager Bellis. Today I have with me Ms. Rose Gordon, who is the coordinator for the juvenile justice program, and she's in the process of writing the fiscal year 1516 grant. This is a program that we've had in Taos for the last 10 years, and should you approve the grant approval, we have a MOU that needs to be signed, if at all possible, by the end of the week. An updated budget was given to you just before the council meeting, and we stand for any questions that you might have.
Councilor Hunt, please.
Uh, no, I just want to thank you, Linda, and especially Rose and others that have worked on this. These are valued, necessary, community pass-throughs, and will not negatively impact the budget. I think we should support all of these programs 100 percent. Thank you.
You're welcome. I want to thank the town council for continuing to be the fiduciary agent for these programs. CYFD requires a government agency as our fiscal sponsor, and you've been very kind and thoughtful in your process of approving programs for the past years. And I want to point out, and I want to apologize for, I think you got three amended versions of this. Third time's a charm. CYFD has changed some of the regulations and what's allowable in funding this year, and so our grant request is lower than it was last year, not because the programs cost less, but because the programs are now required to support more of their own cost for delivering these programs in our community through matches. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about these programs. I gave you a very short summary of what each program does in the community, trying to fit it on one page for you here, and I'm happy to clarify anything that I can.
And Rosie, one more question I have, and thank you for doing the work you do within the community.
Oh, thank you.
And, and, you know, especially with our youth. But one of the things, I know when we incarcerate a young person, and sometimes, hopefully it's for a very short time.
Yeah.
But sometimes it's long, longer term. And do you guys reach out to those that have been incarcerated at all for, you know, maybe with the learning lab or any of?
Are you referring to while, while they're in detention? We, we are primarily an alternative to detention.
Okay.
So things like the learning lab, youth who are no longer welcome at the school or have been suspended for a while are able to join in the learning lab in, rather than be incarcerated. And intensive community monitoring has electronic monitoring that keeps youth out of the detention center.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions? None? What's the wishes?
Vote for approval, Mr. Mayor.
A motion to approve?
And may I ask that you consider signing that MOU? I just need your signature, Mayor, and then I'll need to bring you the first page of the grant, which I have to hand-deliver Friday. Is that possible, or I don't see your lawyer here anymore.
Mr., is that something we can do, honey?
Having approved to, the, the amount of the proposal that we're submitting to CYFD, I have an MOU which simply states that you are continuing to be our fiduciary agent, and it's signed by the members of our board, and, and it requires for CYFD the mayor's signature as well.
Unless there's an objection by the town attorney, I would perceive it as a continuance of the fiscal agency relationship that's already in effect, and just reiterating what we have in place. So if you've got a copy of it.
We do. And, and hopefully there'll be somewhere where I can locate the mayor before Friday for his signature on, on the page of the RFP. Might that be possible, Mayor?
Yes, it is. Even, yes. Just call me. I.
I just, just call you?
I'm available. You might have to go out to the lumberyard and be cutting logs, but I'm available.
I'll be happy to see you in the lumberyard. That'll be a relief from the computer. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time and thought.
We're not done, Rose.
So we're, I don't.
We need to have a second.
We need to. I guess we have to.
Can we move to approve?
Yeah, but with that language to give me the authority.
That's fine.
Okay. With that language that.
Yes, of course.
And second. Any further discussion? Mr. Lopez?
I'm sorry, I was out of the room taking care of the last matter. Now, we've had the conversations about this, and is this the language about allowing subcontractors?
No, no.
No, no.
This is simply restating that the Town of Taos agrees to continue being our fiscal agent for this grant proposal in 2016, which is five separate programs. It's not the subcontract issue that you're referring to.
And are we currently the fiscal agent?
Yes, you are and have been for a number of years, but they require a new document every year.
Okay. Take a look at it.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt, too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just find me my, I don't know if you know my cell, but it's, if you want to write it down.
I would love to write it down. It's for public.
It's all right. 770-7255.
7255. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So go to resolution, item C, resolution 1472 regarding lease agreement with Taos Masonic Lodge. Mr. Floyd Lopez?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on July 1st of 2004, the town and Masonic Lodge entered into a lease agreement. It's now attached to the agenda on the Novus. It was a 10-year lease from July 1, 2004, to June 30, 2014. And what it was is the Taos was leasing the property at Kit Carson Museum so the town could operate and maintain the restroom facility during the term of the lease. It's my understanding that the, there are new restroom facilities that are nearby, and therefore, this lease has expired, but the request of the resolution is to receive council approval to allow the lease to remain expired without renewal.
That's a recommendation of staff?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Go ahead and move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Resolution 1472 regarding the lease agreement with Taos Masonic.
Okay.
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hunt, too?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So go on to item D, resolution 1471, budget adjustment request, Ms. Marietta. And I'd read them down there, but you're gonna go through them anyway, so.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, town manager, approval of resolution 1471. This budget adjustment request contains several items. The first one is under the transportation fund. We are increasing the capital outlay by 18,234,000 to cover construction costs for a bus pullout shelter, I mean, a bus pullout and a shelter. That money's coming from the reserve balance that was supposed to be budgeted this year, was just inadvertently not included.
On that one, before you go on, let me just ask a question on that one. French, does that include handrails along that? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
The next item is in the utility construction fund, which is 81, increasing that budget by $9,000 for the La Posta sewer crossing project for additional costs due to some underestimation in quantities. The next one is in capital improvements fund, 51, increasing revenues and expenditures by $9,053 for additional pullouts and bus shelters. This was a grant that was expensed, had a carryover balance last year, but we didn't put it in the budget. So the money is there for the grant revenue, and the town's match is coming from the old communications relocation budget that we have. The next one is the water, wastewater and enterprise fund. We need to increase operating expenses by 122,000, $122,100 to cover the cost for the transporting of the sludge to Rio Rancho through the end of the fiscal year, but not necessarily spending that full amount. The permit for the landfill should be done around February, March, so we're just anticipating that through the end of the year, but probably not gonna use it all. And then also to the installation of the automatic gates and the opener at the Septic Discharge Facility. So those are all the items on this budget adjustment. I stand for any questions that you may have.
And just for the council's information, French, when do you figure that permit will be done for the sludge?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as Marietta mentioned, we're anticipating that to be completed by February or March. We do have the public meeting held, to be held on January 15th and 16th, at which time the environment department has 30 days to respond, so.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. French, do we have a time and place for that public hearing on the 15th and 16th?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hunt, the place will be in this room, and I'm not too sure of the time, but I will, I will email it to you.
And the landfill committee, yeah.
It'll be at 5:00, I believe, is what we're getting the time for.
Oh, 5:00 here? Thank you.
Okay. So what's the wishes of the council? We have resolution 1471, budget adjustment. Vote for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. No further discussion. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt, too?
Yes.
So we'll go to item E.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marietta.
Thank you, Marietta. Thank you, French.
Contract TT15130, Advanced Network Management. Mr. Cordova?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, what you have before you is a contract proposal for a new telephone switch to be located and installed at Town Hall. The phone switch is really a server. It's not the complete system. It's the server that supports all of the phones. We are not proposing to replace the total phone system. That contract is an amount of $50,939. And I stand for, any questions that you have at this time?
No questions?
I was just curious, in looking at this, there was just one, one company, the Advanced Network Management, that you got prices from. Was there anybody else you got prices from besides?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Hunt, actually, this is using a state price agreement, and so I didn't obtain any other prices. There is nobody local that can do a Cisco phone switch that has anybody qualified to implement that kind of solution, so I had to go to Albuquerque, and so this is within, if we wanted to remain compatible with our existing phones. If we were gonna go with a different phone system, then we would have to replace all of the phones in Town Hall and throughout the remote sites, and that would add probably about another $30,000 to the total cost of the contract.
And we had a lot of conversation, me and Mr. Cordova, about making sure that if we were going out for a complete system, that we did go out to bid, and making sure that any local opportunities. that any local opportunities for any local contractors or people that did this kind of work were included. So I just want to make sure that that is out there, too. I want to make sure that our business stays local if possible.
Mr. Mayor, I guess the only comment or concern that I have with regards to this is that if Cisco is that restrictive, then we're continuing to lock ourselves into that same restrictiveness. So I, I guess I do have some issues with regards to being that restrictive, because then it puts us in the same position year after year after year. Next year, it may be the phones, not the server. And then we're back to square one while we have the server, but now we need to buy the phones, and we can only buy the phones from the same guy.
Actually, you're, you're right, and I do agree with that. Although there are other Cisco vendors, although within the local area here, there are no Cisco vendors or Cisco resellers or people that can implement a Cisco phone system.
And I guess what I'm getting at is not so much that there's not other Cisco vendors. It's the fact that are we paying Cisco for Cisco's name when there's another, you know, brand X out there that's just as capable, if not less expensive?
There, there is some truth to that, and, you know, I, I thought about that question considerably, and the thing that came back to me all the time is, if I'm going to implement a whole total phone system, then it's going to even cost more. This phone server is going to last us at the minimum five to eight years, and so it will afford opportunities for other additional enhancements if we want to add those later, but to take advantage of that thing, you would have to also replace the actual handsets, the telephones.
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess what I ask is that we get our last uses out of what we can and move off those systems that are so restrictive, so I get the, the need for it today. But maybe over the course of the next five to eight years, as we start to phase out, that we start to build that fund that we don't just piecemeal replace anymore, or we engage in the, the ability to lease. And having that ability to lease means that we get new equipment year in, year out, or every five years, whatever the agreement may be. But it at least allows us or affords us the opportunity to move away from somebody that's so restrictive that, and we deal with Cisco routers pretty, pretty regularly at, at the co-op, and just knowing how restrictive they are. I mean, they only allow their service engineers, their technical engineers, to work on a Cisco system. Even our own network engineers within the co-op can't touch a Cisco router. So, I mean, I think just, I'm not doubting that it's a decent system, but I just think it's, it's too restrictive for what we can afford.
And just a recommendation, Mr. Cordova, maybe in, down the road, if you'll just bring analysis back showing the difference between leasing and purchasing, so that we have an idea for down the road. This is not going to happen, but at least we have something to compare to down the road, to see if it's viable, like as Commissioner, Counselor Gonzalez recommended, so that we at least have something to compare to. Because right now, you know, we're talking about a, a little portion of a system versus a whole system. But again, as our, we continue to age, our equipment ages, and, and, you know, I know if we're going to change systems out quite frequently, it is better to lease. But if we're going to stay with a system, sometimes it's better to, but we just want, I just, I would like to see that cost difference, that cost comparison, because, you know, that's something that I don't know a whole lot about as far as the phone system itself, just like IT. You know, I know portions of it, but I don't know the whole system, how it all works, so.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to, to be conducive, too, to the fact that anytime government goes out for bid on any, anything, that we give our locals a fair shot, irregardless of, of what it is. And if we're doing something as restrictive as what Cisco is, there's almost a certain guarantee that somebody local won't be doing that work.
I agree 100%. And whether, you know, we had a couple of contractors that looked at this, and we made them aware that we, every, if we have something local, we would like to keep it local. And Conrad will, has agreed that if there's something that comes up and we can get a local contractor, we'll send that out to them, so.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to address the open questions room earlier, if this is appropriate.
Sure. Oh, yeah, for, on the dispatch?
Dispatch center.
Go ahead.
So I, what I did find out was, when the system was cut over, there was an outage of about a day and a half to two days, depending on how you mark the time, where there was no paging at all. The paging is back online as it is right now. The only problem right now is still the Taos Fire Department, and that is still down. There is somebody on site looking at it. They are trying to identify the problem. At this point, they believe the problem to be a software problem on the console level, but they're not really sure. They're still working on it. And as soon as they get that back online, I'll let you know when that is.
Okay. If you'll keep us informed on, you know, through either text or email or something, so that we're informed of how that's transpired.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of the public that might be watching this, so that we don't get them scared, since the original failure last Sunday night, the chief and I and Ovi had met, and there are multiple systems in place for communicating this information. It's never been a question that dispatch and the fire companies have been out of touch. It was just that they had to use either the backup method that already exists within our system, or that it was done by phone or radio.
Okay. Okay, matters from staff. Any other matters?
Thank you, Conrad.
Thank you, Conrad. None? We'll go to town manager's report, local community service block grant allocations.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'd like Sharon and Linda to come forward. They've been working on this process, and they have some recommendations in regards to funding, and for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to hand out a series of paperwork.
You might want to pull that mic a little closer to you.
And while Sharon passes out the paperwork, I'll just give you an overview of the local community services block grant. The block grant has two programs. One is a small program in which you can ask for up to $5,000. The other program is a larger program in which the nonprofits could ask for a greater amount. We had eight nonprofits respond to the larger grant requests, and six nonprofits respond to the $5,000 or less. We had a total of $324,575 funding requests, of which we only had about $100,000 to give out. Two-thirds of those funding requests were salaries. One-third was actual operations. The committee has two recommendations on the larger program, and once everyone gets their paperwork, we'll be able to walk through that together.
Mr. Mayor, this was an issue I meant to bring up at the last council meeting, and it completely slipped me, but John Martinez, who is the executive director of Help New Mexico, had given me a call, and, and they operate within the confines of Taos. Help New Mexico is a help-based organization that helps low-income disadvantaged families with educational opportunities, agricultural opportunities, and whatnot. Their sole hospice operates under community services block grants. And they had asked, in the future, if the town would just partner with them, because they are that entity already. They are probably the state's largest entity for community service block grant funds, that we partner with them, rather than trying to go off separately on our own after community service. Because then, at that point, what we're doing is we're just diluting the pot with what comes to Taos. So if there's initiatives that we want to see done here, or, or items that we'd like to see achieved, that we try to partner through Help New Mexico and allow them to be that, that agency. They don't require fiscal agency. They don't require anything other than they are a community service block grant provider.
Okay. That's a good idea. So continuing forward, you have, you have two large matrix, and these are the recommendations from the committee. There's two separate recommendations. Again, you'll see that two-thirds of the requests were in the form of salaries, while only one-third was in actual operations. The committee's first recommendation, if you go to the bottom of the matrix, you'll see the, what the recommendation was. So for the Bridges project, the funds requested was $15,000, and the recommendation is $7,690. And if you flip it over, you'll see what the comment was, which is, the recommendation is to award $6,000 towards salaries and $1,690 towards operating costs. The second, Community Against Violence, requested $134,585, which was well above what the pool of funds were available. The majority of that, $134,585, was in salaries, and they requested $15,100 in operations, and the recommendation was $2,400. And that $2,400 in their budget was for direct assistance beneficiaries, the food and clothing. And the next nonprofit, Nonviolence Works, requested $21,000, and it was the recommendation of the committee to give them $8,800. The recommendation is to award $5,000 towards a driver plus fuel, and $3,800 towards consumable supplies. Rocky Mountain Youth Corps requested a total of $24,790. $21,740 was in salary, and $3,050 in operations, and the recommendation from the committee was to award the $3,050 in operations. The Taos Coalition to End Homelessness requested $20,000, of which $11,000 was salaries, salary, and it was a recommendation from the committee to award the full amount. This was the only nonprofit to be recommended to get the full amount. They identified in their response that the funding request, the executive director position would be changed from part-time to full-time, and they were moving the double-wide mobile home to county property, and the cost of the move was approximately $30,000. However, the move would save them $11,000 a year in rent, and they felt that with the savings, they'd eventually be able to support the executive director full-time position, and felt like this was a, the homeless shelter for the men was definitely a, a need in the community.
Can I have a question for you?
On this one here. Is this budget for a full year, or is it for a half year?
I don't, I don't think that they actually specified. It was more of a project and the project cost. So they did say that they would have it up and running by the holidays. I do remember that, seeing something about that in the committee, in the committee.
By Thanksgiving.
It still hasn't moved.
Pardon me?
It still hasn't moved. My question is, in other words, if, if this was a fiscal year request, we're half the fiscal year gone, then we should only fund half the fiscal year.
Well, and, and this is, these are only recommendations, obviously, this is something to vote on.
No, no, but I understand.
But I understand what you're saying.
This is what I'm trying to bring up to the council, is that in a lot of cases, these requests are for a fiscal year. And so we're halfway through the fiscal year, and, and that's why I'm asking the question. If they didn't give you a, a schedule of when this money was going to be used, then my, my assumption is it's fiscal year, which we're halfway over.
That was part of the RFP, so they're proposed budget drawdowns, or drawdowns for the grant. And so some did say beginning July 1st, but some did not. So we can go back and look at that and make sure that it's just from January 1st forward, or the time, the start of the contract to June 30th.
Mr. Mayor, the agencies were supposed to respond with a full one-year budget, but with the projection that there would be a January 1 contracting date to the end of the fiscal year on June 30th, with the potential for renewal.
Are you assuming then that this contract with the shelter would be a half-year budget? Or would it be, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what we're doing here, because if, if it's only a half year that they were figuring on, but they gave us a budget for a full year, this would free up $10,000 to go to another organization. And I'm not trying to cut them short. If they need the $20,000, they should get the $20,000. But if that's based on a, on a full year, we got another year coming up in, in, in July, so if they can get by with 10, it helps some other organization with what they're not going to get. That's...
And Mayor, council, that's a good point. Perhaps the personnel, the personnel, the salary would be reduced in half, but the operations, which were more for supplies and that type of thing, could be the full amount. Just, just, just a thought.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Going forward, the Humane Society of Taos requested $23,600, and the recommended award was $16,600. And the Taos County Senior Center Program requested $30,000 with a recommended award, $15,000. The Youth Heartline requested $14,000 with a recommended award of $9,478. So the total amount of the first recommendation is $83,018,000 to go into the large program. The second recommendation is identical, with the exception of the Taos County Senior Center Program receiving $31,600 instead of $15,000, and the Humane Society not receiving anything. And that was because they currently have a large contract already with the Town of Taos.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Gonzalez?
I think I'd have to kind of agree to that one, because I get huge heartburn with regards to the rate we fund for humane services and at the rate that we fund for our senior services. And I've had several seniors of the community ask how we fund an animal shelter in greater depth than we do our, our seniors. And, you know, it's, it's always a hard one to, to justify that, well, the humane center, the humane services are by law, and by law, I don't have to fund senior services. But we're leaving our, our elders behind and with their lack of services. So if there's any possibility, especially in areas where we can, I'd give as much allocation to our seniors as possible.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, yeah, the intention was really to merge all these programs, including the Humane Society into one, and the anticipation was that they would propose an operating budget as part of this, and then we would merge those dollars to the $100,000. Not that it was intended to be a supplemental program to the existing contract.
And that's a good point. Manager Bellis, one of the things that came out of the, out of the committee that reviewed was the salary costs across the board, they were not new positions, they were not new programs, but it was just an increase in salary. So maybe that's something next year, when the RFPs go out, we might want to just limit it to the programs. Unless they can show sustainability, I mean, that's just the, the real issue about salaries.
One of, one of the other things we might want to look at in some areas is that, that we only fund a startup, and they have to find permanent funding. As, as some of these projects now, I mean, there's others that, for example, senior citizens or the homeless shelter and that sort of thing, that absolutely need our support, because they aren't going to find it anywhere else. Those would be exemptions from it. But for, you know, Rocky Mountain Youth Corps, we could fund a special project that they're doing within the community, but not their ongoing operation.
Linda, could you just give, because not everybody has all this material that we have here, could you just give a very brief description of the proposal of each of these organizations? Like, for example, excuse me, not everybody's probably familiar with Youth Heartline and what they do.
Youth Heartline is an after-school program, and they, I believe, are located at... And they, I believe, are located on Gustav Road.
In an apartment complex.
Right. So they help kids with homework, that type of thing.
Isn't that the CASA program?
I believe so, yes.
Quarter-Finited Special Advocates. So it's way more than just tutoring.
Right. Oh, yeah. Yeah, they have a neighborhood and the arts program. They do a lot of different things.
Very good cause.
I'll just briefly do this, and maybe, we don't have any of that information with us, but the Bridges Project is a group that goes to high schools and talks to them about how to fill out their college applications and how to receive better scholarships.
They have a college day, as well as they, people can come into their offices. They're open, I believe, nine to five. So if you need help, and it doesn't matter, you know, how old you are, they will help you fill out your applications and Pell Grant, that type of thing.
The Community Against Violence, I believe you all understand that that is set up for victims of domestic violence. And the Nonviolence Works, do you remember what that program was?
It's also an after-school program, but I believe that they work with the juvenile justice system as well. So they do a lot of different, they provide a lot of different services. The transportation cost that they refer to is to have drivers for people that have issues with transportation. So they fill in that gap in that area.
I think you know what the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps is and the Humane Society of Taos and Ontianos. So that left the Youth Heartline, and that's what you started up with. In terms of what the actual projects were, you know, the best that we did was break it down between the salary and the operations. So going to the small program, the small grant program, there were six who responded. The Just This Program requested five thousand dollars, and it was the recommendation to give them five thousand dollars. The Rocky Mountain Youth Corps.
Excuse me, Lynda, Just This, could you, what do they do?
They.
I'm so sorry. They are.
Oh, it was a film production.
They're doing a film production of focusing on the Metamatheter. And so they are targeting kids that are.
Okay, at-risk high schools through the Metamatheter?
Right.
With Bruce McIntosh?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
The Rocky Mountain Youth Corps requested five thousand dollars, and they were not awarded any funding. I think it was the opinion of the committee that they have a very high, two-point-six-million-dollar budget, and that five thousand dollars just really doesn't impact it that much. And they had also were receiving funding through the large program. The Sierra Vista Cemetery requested five thousand dollars and will be received, and the recommendation is to receive five thousand. The Taos Children's Theater, it's two thousand five hundred, and the recommendation was to give the two thousand five hundred. The Taos Community Foundation requested five thousand and had quite a leveraging amount that they could turn around and would be able to give out ten thousand dollars. And that recommendation was to give them the five thousand. The Youth Heartline, because they had also requested funding in the large program, there was not a recommendation to give them any funding.
Lynda, can you tell us what the project was for Sierra Vista Cemetery?
I believe it was.
More sort of historic preservation.
And a charrette.
Right. They were going to be redeveloping the entrance and some of the plots for numerous graves that were falling apart.
I apologize, we probably should have brought the proposals in with us.
Mr. Mayor, the one, there's two items that don't appear on here. One, that they got in their letter late, which was from the school system for a project for five thousand dollars to do a art mural project in conjunction with local artists. The other one, which we subtracted from the top, was the eighteen thousand dollars that we used to lease the Guadalupe Gym throughout the season to allow recreational activities to happen there for basketball and other events for the kids in the community. So that left the hundred thousand dollars.
Councilman?
So just to clarify, I want to go back to Councilman Peralta's concern. So when I read here under the Bridges Project that we're going to award them seventy-six, seventy-seven hundred dollars, are they going to get the seventy-seven hundred on January 1st or split up into six equal payments through the end of this fiscal year? Or are they getting half of what's stated here? Just want to clarify that, so.
The contracts specify that there has to be a level of service, and depending on negotiating their level of service plan, if it's, I'm presuming it'll be a monthly report, they'll be reimbursed on a monthly basis.
So then if we start, if we just use Bridges as an example, if we start January 1st, we have six months through the end of the fiscal year, provided that we receive a monthly report, then we should be issuing a check to Bridges of roughly eleven hundred each month.
I'll trust your math.
Well, I mean, right. I mean, what I'm hearing Councilman Peralta state is that, or question or wonder about, and correct me, Councilman, if I'm misunderstanding you, but since this is coming out halfway through our fiscal year, are these awards for the amount stated or half the amount?
I don't know that you can say that in a blanket across here because I believe that typically in the Taos County Senior Program, they're looking for thirty thousand dollars for the year. And Mayor, you can correct me on this, but I believe they were looking for that thirty thousand dollars from July 1 to June 30th.
Right.
So they're probably front-loading their expenses. So that's at your discretion as counsel on that one.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, though, is that we can't reimburse for previous expenses. So if the Senior Citizens Center has already made those expenses, we can't reimburse them. We can only go forward. So going back to Councilmember Hans' question is, and my question then is, are these requests in their proposals to us for a fiscal year? And so if we break that down and say, half the year is gone, then we can only award half of what the request is or consider awarding only half of the request. If, now, if we're substantially less than that, I don't think they would have a problem spending it. But in that remainder of the half fiscal year, but I'm just saying is that, you know, based upon what the request is, we have to look at it from where we are in our fiscal year and saying, no, you already spent it from December backwards to July. I'm sorry, I can't reimburse you.
And Councilman, I absolutely agree with you. And I am not familiar with every one of these proposals. Again, when we wrote the RFP, it was to present us with an annual budget, but a funding request for a contract from January 1 to June 30th. So what I would suggest is if you want to approve the organizations to be funded and then put a contingency on that, that the funding be for the six-month period from January to June, so that if these are annual figures, they will be adjusted accordingly downward.
I would think that the organizations who've gone through this process were assuming that the recommended award amounts would be for the rest of this fiscal year, regardless of where their individual budgets are at. So they may be working on an annual fiscal budget, or they may be working July to June. But in presenting the proposal or responding to the RFQ and RFP, Bridges is hoping for seventy-six hundred dollars to be dispersed January through June. I would be very concerned if we were going to cut these disbursements in half. In some cases, there's not a whole lot of money. So if we look at Rocky Mountain Youth Corps at three thousand dollars, if we cut that in half to fifteen hundred, it hardly seems worth it. So I think the intent was to fully fund, and I'd like to see us adhere to that. The other thing I'd like to say about this process is that, Mr. Manager and staff, this is exactly the kind of effort we were hoping for to completely remove the political element from this. Who else was on the committee that viewed this? I'd like to compliment them on their work. Lynda, who else was?
It was all town staff.
And who from the town, though? I mean.
Generally, we don't reveal.
Okay, which, but different departments, so not just one department.
Doesn't make you real popular, Councilman.
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess I'm not very popular, so I don't really care. But well-represented from other departments, not just all out of, say, HR.
That's true, they were different departments.
Okay.
And Councilor Han, just to, maybe just to clarify a few things. The programs that are being, for example, Rocky Mountain, it's personal protective equipment. So, and the Humane Society had asked for a van. So many of these things are things that can be purchased very quickly. The cemetery, they can purchase what they need to do. The Bridges Project, they're not going to be doing their college days until the spring. So it still falls within the six months. So I don't think it's as difficult of a decision as it looks like without knowing all the information.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Can you think, as you look at this list, Lynda, can you think of an exception to that?
Well, I believe the Youth Heartline program was actually a summer program or an after-school program.
That was for the lower amount. It's for next summer, I believe. That was the Neighborhood and the Arts Program for the lower or the abbreviated process. The five thousand that they requested was for that program, that art program that they provide during the summer months.
Lieutenant Maggio is raising his hand. He must know something about this. Sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Mayor and Councilman Manager, I just had a meeting with Youth Heartline, a meeting with Youth Heartline, and I did kind of explain what they did because I did a safety check for them. And part of the program that they're going to offer besides counseling for kids is called a safe exchange, basically. So it'll also kind of eliminate, for the police have to go do standbys when parents exchange kids. And, you know, anytime you've got kids and custody, emotions fly high. So I made some recommendations for safety when they're doing that. So hopefully, if they get it going, that it'll alleviate some of the police department having to go do standbys for parents. So basically, they don't hurt each other and safety. So that's also a service they're going to be offering, just to put an input there.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Can you see any other hiccups in this, Lynda? I'm just trying to address Councilman, and clarify Councilman Peralta's valid concern.
Council, Councilman Han, what we could do on this is that if these programs do run over, is that obviously, very shortly, in a couple of months, we're going to be doing another RFP for the July 1. And typically, CDBG, CSBG works the way that if you haven't finished your project, you can't put in for more money. Or what you haven't finished is subtracted by, from your request for the coming year. That might simplify it.
I'm just very grateful for this process and grateful to fellow councilors for looking into this and getting it going. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, anything else? Words of wisdom or counsel? I know Councilor Gonzalez had one recommendation for next year, so we'll have to look at that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I guess what I would say is, if this requires an approval, I would move for approval with the stipulation that the staff look into the timing of the request. In other words, is it a one-year request? Or is it, and make an adjustment as they see fit to any proposal that was presented. In other words, Mr. Mayor, if you look at it, there's only a couple here that are getting, that are almost full awards. So, you know, some of those others are so small that they're meaningless. Well, it would be one year, one month. And if necessary, if you are to reduce some awards and you could bring back with your recommendations to where that money goes to someone else.
And Mayor and Council, we will be, due to the short timeframe in the holiday and the fact that the attorney is leaving for this week for the League of Municipalities, we would ask you for the authority and that approval to draft and enter into contracts with these with the condition that we provide copies to the council of those contracts before we release them for January 1.
I have a question. I know you're new here, and I was just curious when these applications were received. When are they dated? How long have they been sitting on the desk? Because, you know, were they there when you got here? Are they new?
I believe they were, they went into finance because of the procurement process.
Right. We issued the RFP in October, and they were due November 7th.
Okay.
So then I guess lending to the argument that we had already passed the fiscal deadline, I would assume that these are six-month deals? Yeah. So their full funding request would have been double, what that was?
It would depend on the deliverables.
No, because the request was, Mr. Mayor, if I could, from what I heard the manager say was that the RFP went out with a full-year funding request, not a partial.
Not a partial.
Not a partial year.
Okay.
Am I correct?
It went out with a request for a full-year annual budget, but with a contract period of January 1 to June 30th.
So in that case, there could be confusion on the part of the grant E as far as the amount of the request, whether it's a full year or a half-year.
Again, a lot of these are sort of one-time costs. So it's neither, I guess. And some of these, yes, I believe the senior program is a full-year request. And some of them are, did come in, I reviewed some of them quickly, are six-month requests. But I would say the majority of them are one-time, like the five-thousand-dollar request, the Children's Theater, these groups do a single production. Just This is the same way. Rocky Mountain is one-time. They're project-related rather than operational. And in the reviews, the review panel actually looked at not wanting to fund annual salaries and ongoing operating expenses if they did not add a new component or a new project to the program. to the program.
I'll adjust, then. My motion is to accept the recommendation of the committee as presented.
I'm going to second that for purposes of discussion.
Okay. Discussion. And before you go on, just one second, before you go into it, you made a recommendation earlier about, about one of the programs, I guess, was it the Humane Society or Ancianos?
It was the, I think there was an alternative option in funding rate.
Was alternative to?
It's the second recommendation.
We would eliminate the funding to the Humane Society, take that money and give full funding to Ancianos at the $30,000 request.
Yes.
So that, and now we're just going to go back to you, Councilor Peralta, was this on recommendation two?
Yes.
Okay. Then that clarifies your question, too?
I think it does. So Councilman Gonzalez, where I was going with that was that we had made a verbal, I really like this, I really want us to stick to this, but I can see two anomalies. One was our commitment to the senior citizens way back in, geez, June?
July.
July, for 30, a verbal commitment. And then we asked Mr. Trujillo to go through this process, and he's done that. The other problem I have is that in January, we'll be meeting with the county to deal with animal ordinances, best practices, funding initiatives, and all of that. And so I fully believe they need the support, but it seems a little premature to be purchasing a van, washers and dryers at this point. Not that they don't need it, but we're not quite sure what's going to happen with them. So that's what the mayor was picking up on, my concern about those two issues. So I guess I'd like to hear the motion one more time and make sure we've got it all covered with the understanding that Ancianos is going to be funded with 30 for this year and that we're going to trade that with the van that Stray Hearts was hoping to get. And I'm up for other discussion on that, but...
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
So the motion was to accept the alternate recommendation, and we have a second to that, and we're under discussion. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Please give my thanks to the committee members. I know this was a lot of reading and a lot of time, and I appreciate all the work you put into it.
Yes, they deserve a big thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, councilmembers. I need to clarify the motion. So Councilmember Peralta, you made the motion to accept the recommendation of the committee as well as Councilmember Gonzalez's recommendation to move the funding from the Humane Society to the Ancianos.
I believe that was the alternate recommendation.
The alternate recommendation is on the forum. They just approved that recommendation.
Alternate two, so that would be removing the $16,600 to Humane Society is zero, and $15,000 of that is then transferred to Ancianos for a total of $30,000.
They didn't give me those.
We get it, Renee?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't have a copy of that. I was following the other one.
Thank you. Okay, other matters, Town Manager?
Just, Mr. Mayor, you had asked for Linda to prepare a brief summary of where we are in regards to overall grants. And if you would entertain that at this time, I believe she's prepared with a report.
Thank you. And Counsel, I did, you know, she's new, and I just wanted to get everybody on board and, you know, how she's moving forward. I think she's hit the ground running, and just want to make sure everybody's comfortable. And, you know, I think we have a lot, she has a lot to share, and there's opportunities out there, and she's trying to find those opportunities for us, so...
Thank you, Mayor, Councilor, and Manager Bellis. As the mayor said, I was asked to kind of give an update on everything I've done since I've come on board. I did begin employment the last week of October, but it was at a conference, and so actually been in the office five weeks. And so this is a snapshot of what I've been working on. And I just thought I would walk through it, but if you have any questions, please stop me, and I'll be happy to talk about that. So the first grant, the Plazacultural Landscape Preservation Plan and Architectural Walking Map, is through the Culture Affairs Historic Preservation Division. And this is a grant that we had been previously written, and we received a contract, but the contract was not executed. And Manager Bellis and I are working with the Historic Preservation Division architect on expanding the scope and requesting more funding. And I anticipate that letter to go out by, before the holidays. So the plan would be $50,000.
Sorry about that. Dispatch is working now.
So the total project for the plan would be $50,000, $25,000 from a grant and $25,000 from the Town of Taos. And the architectural walking map would be $11,000. Again, that's a 50-50 split. That particular map would showcase points of cultural historical significance. So those two, I do believe, will be going out before the end of this month. The Community Forestry Assistance Grant for $50,000, I submitted that last month, and that grant will support an assessment inventory of trees in the historic district as well as the development of a comprehensive forest management plan. This particular grant is Phase Two of an assessment project, tree inventory project that began in 2012. And the first location was the Kit Carson Park, so now we're expanding it towards the historic district. And again, we're hoping to get a forest management plan out of that as well. I wrote an assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $68,977. That was for vehicle extrication equipment and search and rescue equipment. The full amount requested was $62,700, excuse me, $62,706 with a match of $6,270. This particular grant is extremely competitive, and apparently the Town of Taos has never received this grant before. So I went back and read the last 10 years' submissions and tried to put a new spin on it, and hopefully we'll be lucky and be successful in this. The first phase of the grant is very much based on call volume. And so if we get past that, then I think, we'll see. We'll see what happens on that. I worked with Eric on this, and he, it was great. I really enjoyed working with the fire department. So I have a grant that's due this week. It's a demonstration urban forestry grant. It's for $40,000. It's through the New Mexico Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources Department, and it's to landscape the 320-foot frontage area in front of Kit Carson Park, all the way from the north entrance to the south entrance. It's a collaboration with Los Ardeles, Rocky Mountain Youth Corp., and the Lilac Festival Board. Also, I am working on the Taos Artist Lofts Project. This is a project that began with a pre-development grant received through the National Endowment for the Arts. Manager Bellis and I will be meeting with Santa Fe Community Housing Trust in the resubmission of two applications. The first one is the Art Place for $400,000. And I apologize, I wrote New Mexico Tax Credits, it's actually the New Market Tax Credits, which specifically is the low-income housing tax credit. So we'll be meeting with them at the end of this week to see what all is involved in the resubmission of that application. Upcoming grants, the mayor asked me to look into the New Mexico Tourism Event Sponsorship Grant that's due in February. And the grant is really based on the size of the event, and you'll see that a small event, you can ask for up to $10,000, a medium event, you can ask for up to $20,000, and a large event, up to $40,000. So I think that's to be determined as to what we'll be asking for. I'm also working with the Taos Community Foundation, the Harwood Museum, and the Arts and Cultural District on the National Endowment for the Arts, Our Town Grant. And that's due in February as well. We can ask for up to $200,000, and we just haven't quite put our arms around exactly what we're asking for, but that should be, within the next week, I think, we'll be honing in on exactly what it is that they want to do. And I also have an E-Rate Grant in the works. It's really just a subsidized internet service that's very specific to libraries. And I'll be meeting with Conrad as well as Shirley on that particular one. So that's an overview of the grants that are in process right now. In terms of contract administration, it totals $675,160 for the Village of Costa. And you can read all this, El Prado, the Children Youth Families Development, New Mexico Tourism, New Mexico Community Against Violence, and the Youth Conservation Corps. The second part of this report is a public works grant status report, and these are the grants that are actually in project now in construction and engineering. And Miranda and I, I think Miranda and Franch are here, in case you have any questions very specific to the projects.
Counsel? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's been a great opportunity.
Counsel, we're going to still continue to have updates from the different department heads as we move forward so that we have, you know, as much information and much open transparency as we possibly can.
Oh, and Mayor, I hope that in the next report, you'll start seeing some of these grants coming in, so instead of just what's being submitted. So it's exciting. Thank you.
I don't know what justifies a small, medium, or a large event, but I would think we would like to have a large grant.
I think we should, too.
You know, if anything like the Congo, or I mean, what was the other one?
Mumford and Sons.
That was a large event.
Yep, it was.
And I think we continue that type of event that draws people, especially if it's right before a holiday or right before another event, so that it adds a day, so that people will stay that extra day within our community, heads and beds, people eating and playing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So go matters and reports from the mayor, appointing to Planning and Zoning Commissioners, Commission. We are short a member, and I'd like to recommend that we appoint Mr. Doug Patterson to the Commission.
Mr. Mayor, we asked the combined meeting of the Historic Commission and the Planning Commission for recommendations, and both bodies were unanimous in actually requesting that we reappoint Mr. Patterson because they felt that, given the number of design projects and potential for large commercial projects coming up, that he had unique experience in that area and familiarity with the land use code.
And the question was, who would he be replacing there? Mr. Bellis?
He would be replacing Justin Lee, who was the chairman, who had resigned about a month and a half ago.
The position that he would be filling is that in at large, or is it a position that it has to be a resident? Because Mr. Patterson is not a resident.
I don't have the answer to that one for you, but however...
And we had talked about changing the ordinance, but we haven't done it yet.
Yeah. Mr. Lee and Mr. Patterson were not reappointed, I'm sorry, Mr. Patterson was not reappointed. Mr. Patterson was replaced with a resident. So I believe that would, even if Mr. Lee was a resident, that would leave a non-resident opening. Basically, he'd be filling his old position, in effect, is what happens.
Okay. I mean, I don't have any, Chris, I just want to make sure we're following the code until we get it changed. I just want some pressure on the commission to get some of these things changed.
Okay. So what's the wishes of the board, too?
Move for approval.
Second recommendation and a second, no further decisions. Any discussion?
Nope.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
No.
I'm going to go to item B, appointments to the Personnel Committee. And I just want to kind of go through this a little bit, and Mr. Lopez, correct me if I get off point here, but Council appointed, former Council appointed Lillian Miller to serve on that committee. And then the former mayor appointed Mr. King and Mrs. Debbie Frye. And they have both resigned, and this is before we took office. And so I needed to appoint somebody. I appointed Mr. Gene Sanchez so that we would have a committee, because we needed to have a committee to hear a couple of cases that needed to be heard that were, had been lagging in arrears. And now the two of them need to appoint a third member to the board, so...
Which Gene Sanchez?
Gino.
Gino, from...
Yes.
Not Loma?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess what I need is ratification of the appointment of Mr. Gene Sanchez, of Mr. Lopez.
Actually, I don't believe that the approval of the council is required, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. The personnel policy states that the council has one appointment, the mayor has one appointment, and then those two members appoint the third member. So the council is the one, appointed Lillian Miller, and she continues to serve. Mayor Cordova appointed Keith King, and he resigned in October. And so the mayor appointed Mr. Sanchez to replace Mr. King. And I've spoke to both Ms. Miller and Mr. King, I mean, Mr. Sanchez, and they have gotten together, had some proposals of persons to be the third appointee, which they, under the personnel policy, are empowered to appoint between the two of them. And the persons that had considered declined. And so I think they're meeting again at the end of this week to come up with another person.
Good.
This is, I think, believe this was just...
Informational item?
Informational.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody's, you know, heard it, so you have part of the Personnel Committee. Under other matters, I don't have any other matters, just, I think, just a great event that happened on Friday.
Where are you at, Mr. Mayor?
Other matters from the council and reports from Counsel. We'll turn, start at you, Councilor Hahn.
Okay.
And we're going.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So IGC luncheon last week with priorities of Camino de Medio, the Old County Courthouse, and animal welfare. Mr. Bellis and the mayor were there. Funding is not hopeful. The landfill board and IGC will be meeting this coming week on the 17th. The hospital health study committee. We have, so this is going to be a little like, sit back and you're a lazy boy and put your feet up. We have been discussing the business relationship between Community Health Systems, which owns Triad Corporation, which bought Quorum Health Systems, which is currently managing the hospital. And they all have a vested interest in HPG, the primary supplier to hospital supplies. It was noted that it appears that Holy Cross could contract with its own provider of goods as its GPO, which puts into question the value of this part of the Quorum Health Systems contract. It was also noted that Quorum is charging Holy Cross $374,000 a year for support services, and support services are needed. It is a concern of the committee that cause comparisons with other hospital management companies. companies and alternatives take place. Board member, Holy Cross Board Member Stagg, Chris Stagg, who's assigned to this committee, will be bringing this to the Board Wednesday night to relay the concerns to the Board that the GPO through HPG could be individually contracted out by Holy Cross at pretty much the same savings that Quorum is currently getting us. It is gonna be, Chris is also gonna carry forth my concern, my individual concern, that the Board seriously consider publishing an RFQ and RFP for management companies sooner than later. It's gonna be a lengthy process, this is a suggestion for Board consideration and approval. Apogee is the contracted hospitalist group. They've been in operation two months now, little over two months. These are contracted in-house doctors who are referred to as hospitalists. Preliminary indicators are positive with this new group. However, the committee is asking that an analysis of care be conducted at a six-month interval. I had asked that the comparisons between Apogee and the previous group be done on an objective basis, based on these parameters: physician turnover, staffing levels, ICU premature transfers, hours worked seeing patients, and most importantly, patient satisfaction surveys. The Health Study Committee had asked if staffing ratios, if there was a correlation between staffing ratios and patient satisfaction, and so Linda and Chief Nurse Anna Beeta went into that study. And pre-layoff a year ago, a little over a year ago at this time, we had a staffing ratio of one nurse to four patients. Post-layoff, one to six. It was noted that there does not seem to be a correlation between patient satisfaction and quality of care. It was noted, however, by the committee that there is a need for a greater longitudinal study. So, Linda at Holy Cross is gonna be investigating or carrying on with that. It was my experience dealing with the homeless shelter thing over Thanksgiving, where homeless men had no place to go, and there's a lot of concern in the community about that, and I got a call from a physician's assistant who was on duty in the emergency room Thanksgiving evening, not knowing who to call, or how to transfer, or get someone out of the cold. And we got those answers for the PA on duty, but what was extremely frustrating was trying to call Holy Cross after hours. I placed four calls to Holy Cross. The first three were never answered. On the fourth call, I was disconnected. So, we brought that, the study committee brought that to nursing, Ms. Beeta. Apparently, what happens is after hours, when you dial a hospital, you go through the main trunk line, then you're transferred over after hours to the med search floor, and then a nurse on duty is required to pick up the phone and answer the call. The only problem with that is, is that he or she is a nurse and caring for sick people and not a telephone operator. So, Ms. Beeta and staff are gonna look into having the emergency room registrar handle all those calls. The emergency room registrar is a secretary, could answer calls in a timely way. Much better to have that occur than to have a very expensive nurse trying to take care of sick people, answer telephone calls. But answering the phone is key. The study committee listened to The Spot out of Penasco. The Spot is involved with outreach services for all health issues, mental health issues, you name it. Carol Miller spoke, and Commissioner-elect O'Donnell was there as well, and they are asking the hospital for a complete accounting of the $1 million Kresge grant. Commissioner-elect O'Donnell is asking for a line-by-line analysis. Ms. Miller's concern is that there is still $150,000 left in that grant. Apparently, The Spot has gone out of business. The $150,000 left could possibly fund the rekindling or restarting of The Spot, and so the committee will be dealing with this again next month. The hospital employee survey, there's kind of a mixed result there. If one looks at the survey, the question of communication between staff and administration is good. One way of interpreting that is that 56% of the employees at Holy Cross feel it is not good. Ms. Beeta reviewed that and feels that there is an interpretation issue going on here, and that actually 56% of the employees feel that it is good. So, the committee decided, rather than continue to revolve around this issue, to move on into solutions. And Ms. Beeta has done a really good job outlining what techniques and initiatives she's gonna use to improve communication between administration and managers, administration and staff, managers and staff, parameters where we can then measure in six months' time the effectiveness of that program. It should be noted here that when Ms. Beeta initially presented this information to us, she was really quite forthright, and I personally was pretty upset that not one person from Holy Cross Hospital's administration stood with her to take the criticism. Now, Ms. Beeta defends administration, but I just want you to know that I looked right at Stephen and told him that I really expected him to be standing in front of the room that night. That was the night Bobby was there and all of that, although he left before all of that. But I really expected an administrator to stand with Anna, anyway.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Anna is an administrator.
Well, I understand that. She's the head nurse, but I was talking about a Quorum administrator, Anna...
Let's keep it to that, then.
Yeah.
You know, let's make sure that you're operating properly, because Anna is part of the administration package.
So, good clarification. Good clarification. But my point also, I think, Councilman, you hear it, you understand it. We moved on to talk about Commissioner Blankenhorn's research into the intercept, sequestering part, or all our part, or some of that intercept monies. It's gonna be problematic. We're gonna investigate it a little bit more thoroughly, but it's hoped that terms will be shortened so that we can actually sequester some of those intercept monies, but it is a seven-year project, and we're only in year two, so it's very premature for Holy Cross to be relying on those funds. Ms. Suzanne, I don't know her last name, Fred, who has been running the employee, email employee contact for concerns, says that she's not received any concerns over the last few months, so we're gonna disband that program. Our next health study meeting will be January 7th, and on that agenda will be Commissioner-elect O'Donnell and Carol's request for financial accounting of the Kresge grant, and whether that $150,000 is still available to start up The Spot. Commissioner Blankenhorn's gonna investigate further clarification on the intercept funding possibilities. CFO Steve is gonna present balance sheets, as requested by committee member John Plummer. Balance sheets, hopefully delineating a trend line. And it appears at this point that the hospital is experiencing a $1 million annual shortfall in deferred maintenance, and so this needs to be addressed, and potential solutions will be discussed at that meeting. Finally, the committee wants to forthrightly ask the Holy Cross Board what they would like us to work on after this. So, that'll all be brought up on Wednesday night. And that's it for my committees. I have, I do have a question for Councilman Gonzalez, if, when the time comes.
Counselor, that was when? And that was Wednesday, January meeting, correct?
Yeah, well, Board meeting this Wednesday at 6:00, I think it is, and then the Health Study Committee, January 7th.
Oh, the Board meeting, yeah, January 7th.
At 6:30.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
Counselor Peralta, anything to report?
Just one clarification with last meeting's vote on the contract with, okay, why can't I think today?
Joni Griffin?
With Joni Griffin. My amendment to the contract was only on the term. It did not change any other provisions within the contract. So, all I did was change it from a month-to-month to a six-month contract. That's it. Provisions for termination of the contract, provisions for oversight, provisions for anything else in the contract remain the same. So, that's all it changed in that motion. So, I just want to clarify that, because I think some people thought there were other provisions that gave her more authority, or not, or whatever. It didn't change any of that. The oversight and responsibility is still ours to make sure that she's doing what she's supposed to be doing, and we have the authority to tell her to do or not to do anything that we want.
So, thank you, Councilman. So, that contract call is, and I'm going from memory now, so please correct me, $48,000 a year?
That's correct. That's on the administrative side, yes.
And then, there was discussion about the 15%... Oh, finders fees, what would you call those fees?
It's a discount for placement of ads.
I'm sorry?
It's a discount for placement of ads.
So, Ms. Griffin obtains...
Or commission, I said, commission for...
Obtains a discount in the advertising and then keeps the discount and doesn't pass it on, essentially. Do I got that about right?
The contract is silent in that regard, so you could say that is the right, because it is silent.
Word...
Now, in a new contract, all of that can change.
In July.
And will.
No, no, I'm just saying, but I'm just saying that, you know, I didn't change any of that. All I did was change it from monthly to six months, and with the provision still in there that next month, if you wanted to, you could cancel the contract, because that's a provision within the contract, termination at any time. So, and what I was looking at is just to have something in place until the marketing director gets on board, has an opportunity to look at it, and then make a recommendation to us to either continue at that point, or disband it, or whatever. So, it doesn't change any of that. It just basically says, we're going to continue for the next six months without having any clause in there about this is for this month, or that month, or having to make any kind of positive amendment or writing that next month is okay, we're gonna continue for another month. That's all I did, just make that extension.
And so, Counselor Peralta, so in your eyes, if the marketing director was to come to us and said, we don't need that contract, there's an opportunity to terminate that contract, correct?
That's correct.
That's it? Okay. Thank you.
And, you know, one of my concerns, Councilman, is having attended the marketing meeting this morning, I just, I, as Councilman Gonzalez would say, I'm getting severe heartburn, because I'm, I guess I'm not sure that the $48,000 annual contract with Ms. Griffin is being adhered to, number one, and number two, that 17.5% is just a huge, huge, huge number. And number three, what I'm hearing at the marketing committee is that they are planning out the spring and summer campaigns in detail, at least what I would consider detail, and I'm concerned that our new marketing director is gonna get here and be totally hamstrung with what the marketing committee has already decided they're gonna do. Now, it is a tax, and it is their tax, but we are the fiduciary executors. I just have concern, what are your thoughts?
Here's the problem that you have. You've got to market 90 days and 180 days ahead of time. So, the new marketing director coming in is really gonna be looking at the summer and fall program initially. They're not gonna be looking at what's gonna happen in April, or May, or June. That should already be set up and going out there. What the contract says is that we have the responsibility to determine what we want, where we want it placed, and how we want it placed. So, that's in the contract. So, that's what our job is, to look at and say, with the marketing committee, as our advisors in a sense, saying, here's the program going forth for the next six months. That's it. We're not gonna look out beyond anything like that. Now, there is some misogyny that can happen to that plan within that six-month period, but it's gonna say, you know, we wanna go after this sort of groups of individuals to come to the community, that sort of thing. That's what they're gonna look at. They're gonna look at, where do we find those people? How do we get to them? When the marketing manager's gonna come in and do is say, make sure that that is being done properly within the confines of the contract, and then look at, what are we gonna do beyond that? Where do we go from there?
You know, I, that makes perfect sense to me, and I still have my, you know, if the contract was, if I was the contractor, on marketing, scary thought, and I was billing out for December, that would actually be for the work I was doing in March, in anticipation. Doing, so, you know, it's billed out on a quarterly basis. I don't quite buy that argument that I keep hearing. Yeah, but the other, the really...
But here's the thing.
Yeah.
Okay. It's our responsibility to say, I want you to place that ad in March, but I'm gonna pay for it today, not waiting for her to get invoice, saying, I want it billed today. I wanna prepay that ad, because that closes the door, doesn't allow shopping or anything else, because that's where I want it. So, you can do that. You don't have to do what Joni was saying, and saying, well, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna secure The Spot now, but I won't pay for it till it actually shows.
Right.
You don't have to do that.
Right. And I brought that up last week. So, I just, I, I would really, well, let me just move on to one other thing. At the meeting this morning, it sure looks to me like, you know, when I hear you say, Councilman, that the Council can direct and so on, and so, we have that power?
Manager does.
The manager does. I'm looking at a recommendation that they're about to make to LTAB tomorrow, and to us soon, and perhaps it's premature and inappropriate for me to bring it up, but I got my hands on it, and I gotta tell you, this, to me, looks like a takeover of folks, in my opinion, that have a vested interest in... I better stop there.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
Since the last regular scheduled council meeting, Ms. Griffin has been notified in writing that henceforth, now forward, that she will not be paid for any billings which have not been approved in writing by the town manager. So that's what the contract said. And if I can just clarify a little bit, the, I went back and looked at the minutes, which is May 27th of 2014, is when that contract was submitted to council. And the minutes reflect that the plan was, is that the marketing director would be in place probably, perhaps in September, but probably in December. And that was the reason of the contract, about month-to-month, because it was uncertain when a marketing director would be in place and when that contract would be terminated. The effect of being a month-to-month or sort of existing language, in my view, is material because the contract has a 30-day cancellation clause in it anyway. So basically, that is a month-to-month, even though I think Councilmember Peralta's clarification was, we weren't going to go until September or December, but the original contract was for a full fiscal year. And so he was taking off the fear, I believe, that it could be ended at the end of December and not go forward because we don't have a marketing director yet. But as far as your concern, Councilmember Han, is I believe that she's been notified and she actually sent back an email saying that she understands that from now forward, if she's going to be paid for anything, that she has to get it approved in writing by the town. And as far as the 17.5% commission is concerned, that has been the practice of her, as she explained at the last regularly scheduled meeting, about how she has billed the town. Some of those invoices since they arrived first, I think there have been three, in fact, have been submitted since the beginning of the fiscal year. And those were paid because they were submitted late and it was, I believe, the town's feeling that she had to be paid for whatever work she's done. But I don't believe the commission issue has been finally addressed yet. And so I believe the plan is, is that that will be dissolved as we go forward and obtain the future invoices.
Yeah, I don't know what more I can add here or that I should. I'm grateful for all the citizens who serve on these committees. They put in a lot of time, effort, and thought. But I am very concerned that this is really putting the cart before the horse and that we're hamstringing our, whoever our new marketer is going to be. And I'd, you know, I'd like for the council to reconsider its decision that it made two weeks ago. I hate for us to do that. Perhaps we shouldn't, but just know that I have severe, severe concerns about us not having all the information we needed and making a decision and then discovering afterwards that, oh, yes, but here's this little caveat, and, oh, yes, but here's that little caveat, and we've already approved it. So I do have concerns. Thank you.
And Counselor, thank you for sitting in on those meetings and bringing that information back to us. Counselor Peralta, did you have anything else? Counselor Gonzalez, did you want to? I was just going to ask if you wanted to report on the Lano group, you know, a little bit. I know there's some opportunities, and I don't know if we've ever tapped into them. I just asked.
Mayor, the regional coalition of Lano communities is an organization that the city's been affiliated with since I've served on the council. It was about the time that they came to the council and asked for a representative. It is a membership buy-in. It costs, I think, $3,500 per year to have a seat at the table with them. It's solely comprised of elected officials and, most recently, tribal leaders. So we have seats available for Pueblo of Taos, Pueblo of Pawake, Pueblo of Okeewengay, Pueblo of Sana de Fonzo, Hemis Pueblo. To all have a seat at the table because it focuses so much around the cleanup priorities around Los Alamos National Labs. As you know, the WIP incident in Carlsbad and the direct link to Los Alamos National Labs, Secretary Flynn, who is the New Mexico Environmental Department Director, issued a fine assessment to the National Labs that totaled out, I think, $17 million to Carlsbad for items of negligence and then about $35 million to Los Alamos to items of negligence. So our whole purpose is to create economic development with spin-off revenues. Basically, we know that and understand that the labs exist, but so that the money doesn't get back held up into Los Alamos County, which, if you've been there lately, they have some pretty phenomenal streets, buildings, and schools. And I, my argument has always been that northern New Mexico is always used as a rue when they go see our federal delegation, that, oh, the National Labs benefit northern New Mexico. And we've been a real thorn in the side of Los Alamos County lately because of the fact that when the original coalition was originally set up, it was set up, I think, in essence, to help support lab missions. But more often than not lately, we've really tried to take the approach that we are one all community. We have individuals within this community that work at the National Labs, and yet our funding to this region out of what the laboratory spin-off is in grocery receipts tax revenue is extremely minimal. You know, I think they say they give 100 kids backpacks stuffed and loaded every year, yet Los Alamos County schools get $8 million. So, you know, our trade-off isn't equal, and it's not there. So the regional coalition was established to set up and try to help mediate cleanup issues, environmental issues up at the laboratory, but at the same time, create an equal and level playing field for the surrounding communities, surrounding counties that are inadvertently affected by the labs. And we've historically always said that if Los Alamos sneezes, northern New Mexico catches the cold. And that's because of, we're directly downwind from any lab operations. So I think it's extremely important that this body stay engaged. And Tom Blankenhorn is our county representative on the regional coalition, and lately, he's had a lot of irons in the fire, which he hasn't been able to tend. And I met up with Tom as I was leaving Town Hall this afternoon and asked him if he would consider appointing one of the new commissioners to fill his seat in his absence. So again, Mayor, I know you've heard some rumblings about Los Alamos. I know a lot of people feel that elected officials shouldn't be directly engaged with the labs, and we are not directly engaged with the labs, other than the fact that we have priorities to ensure proper cleanup of their true waste material and that the rest of the region benefits from the operations that exist up there.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you, Consulman Gonzalez. A couple weeks back, some citizens expressed concerns about the Dollar General, and I was wondering how your research is going with that.
Haven't heard anything, and I'll be honest with you, I haven't done anything.
Okay.
But I will report at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Kuntu? Nothing?
I have not, there hasn't been a TCE-DC meeting since the last one that I reported on.
All right. So then we'll go on to executive session.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I'm sure Consulman Kuntu would be happy to know that your Christmas lights on the plaza just made CNN.
All right. Way to go, Councilwoman Kuntu.
So one of the things that I do want to bring up is we do have a ugly sweater contest for the employees and council for, I believe it's Friday, is it Friday?
Yeah, Friday.
Friday at noon.
High noon.
And there's also a ornament exchange, so--
Bring an ornament.
Bring your ugly sweater and join us.
I've been directed.
Next Friday, the 19th, the following Friday, is our Christmas party, a combined Christmas party with the county. We have employees that will be in that transition where they're part county in that day because that's the day they transfer. So they'll be becoming county employees and leaving the town, and we thought it would be appropriate to have that combined Christmas party. It will be at Baton Hall. And we encourage all of our employees here at town to make that party. I think it's something neat for the holidays. The council is sponsoring that party. It's not coming out of our general fund. It's not coming, it's coming out of our pocket. So, just so people know that. And it's for our employees. I think Mr. Lopez and Mr. Bellis have contributed to that also. Again, with that said, if there's nothing else, we'll go to the executive session under personnel matters, executive and public session, discussion, consideration, decision regarding certain personnel matters, and pending litigation, executive and public session information items. And the first one is under 151H2. Pending litigation is under 10151H7. And then the procurement matters is under 10151H6. Mr. Lopez, is there anything you need to add before we, there's a motion to?
So, Mr. Mayor, you could act in the vicinity of myself.
Thank you. We have a motion to go into--
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
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 Mayor, then, to the town manager and me in the executive session, we discuss three items that are listed on the agenda. Personnel matters, under exemption, 1051H2. Pending litigation, under 1051H7. And a procurement matter, under 1051H6.
1015.
We discussed those matters, and no action was taken, and no other matters were discussed.
Counsel, do we have a motion to accept the town attorney's report?
So am I.
We have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember, I mean, Councilmember Han?
Yes, sir.
So, that said, do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And to all a good night.
Thank you, Santa.
And for those of you that we don't see before, have a happy holiday.
Yes, right. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.